Okay. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the Township of West Orange Planning Board Meeting, January 3rd, 2024, 7:30 PM. Notice that this meeting was given to the Township Clerk and posted on the Township Bulletin Board, and the Township website calendar is sent to the West Orange Chronicle and Star Ledger. This meeting has been properly noted to the public in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. No new matters will start after 10:30 PM. May I ask everybody, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. The next regular planning board meeting will be held February 7th, 2024, at 7:30 PM. At this time, I'd like to take a moment and thank Mr. Sal Jensen for his service to the Planning Board in the Township of West Orange. Because of other obligation, personal obligations he has, he's been asked not to be reappointed to the Planning Board for this coming year. So we wish him well and thank him for his service and hope to see him coming in and questioning as a member of the public. Thank you again, Mr. Jensen, on behalf of the Board.
Chairman, thank you for that, and I'm sorry that my video won't work. I just came off of a prayer service, and I just can't get that video on. I'm sorry to say.
At this time, I would like to take the opportunity to welcome Council President Rutherford, Bill Rutherford, and ask Diana McGovern Esquire to give him the oath of office.
Mr. Rutherford, if you please raise your right hand. And just repeat after me. I, H. William Rutherford III.
I, H. William Rutherford III.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of.
Perform all the duties of.
Planning Board Member.
Planning Board Member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, thank you.
Let the record show that we will now seat Council President Bill Rutherford as a member of the Planning Board. Welcome, Council President.
Thank you, everybody. I'm excited to join.
Thank you. Mayor McCartney, as a matter of process, I just want to confirm that you are reappointing Mr. Smeraldo, Mr. Klein, and Mr. John Cardoza moves up to the first alternate of the Planning Board.
Yes, sir, I have spoken to each one. Thank you.
Okay, and Yamalat roll call, please.
Mr. Albert?
Yeah.
Mr. Cardoza?
Present.
Mr. Guerino?
Present.
Mr. Klein?
Yeah.
Mr. Morgan? Mrs. Smeraldo?
Present.
Councilman Bill Rutherford?
Here.
Mayor McCartney?
Present.
Mr. Wilks?
Present.
Chairman Bagh.
Here, thank you. So we now have the annual reorganization of the Planning Board. So we will open up the nominations for Chairman of the Planning Board. Do I have anybody for nomination for the Chairman of the Planning Board? Mr. Guarino?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to I'd like to renominate Robert Bagoff, current Chairman, to another term as Chairman of the West Orange Planning Board.
Thank you. Do I have any other nominations for Chairman of the Planning Board? Any other nominations? Please don't rush to raise your hand. Think about it. You can walk around a little bit. Anybody nominate anybody? Anybody? It comes with money. I got a Starbucks gift certificate. Okay. Nominations will be closed. Yamalat, will you call the roll for voting on the Chairman of the Planning Board?
Okay, Mayor McCartney, second. Okay, Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Guerino?
Yeah.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mrs. Smeraldo?
Absolutely.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Councilman, Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Wilks?
Yes.
Chairman Bagh.
Yes, thank you very much. I appreciate your confidence in my jokes and my ability to be Chairman. I opened the nominations for Vice Chairman of the Planning Board. I'd like to place the name of Mr. Jerry Guarino into nomination for Vice Chairman of the Planning Board. Does anybody else want to place a name into nomination for Vice Chairman of the Planning Board? Anybody? Anybody? Okay, thank you very much. We'll close nominations. Yamalat on the nomination, please.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Guerino?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mrs. Smeraldo?
I'll give him an absolutely also.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Councilman, uh, Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Wilks?
Absolutely.
Chairman Bagh.
Yes, and I would like to take this moment to thank the, to let the members of the Planning Board and the public know that Mr. Wilks has served for three years as Vice Chairman of the Planning Board, been a vital asset to the organization, and we appreciate his service to the Township and to the Planning Board. Will, I really appreciate everything you've done with me and for us. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you, Will.
Thank you. Been a pleasure.
Okay, now that, I would like to ask, Mr. Klein, will you continue to be the representative to the sprab?
Certainly.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. And Mr. Guarino, will you be the second alternate to the representative to the sprab? Mr. Guarino's second alternate. Thank you. At this time, I would also like to recommend to the Board that we reappoint Yamalat Avite as the Board Secretary. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Mrs. Smeraldo, sec, and Mr. Klein unanimously second.
Simultaneously, yes.
Simultaneously, and Yamalat, I'm going to ask for acclamation by the Board. Does anybody have anybody else they would like? Seeing none. I will make one vote in favor of for the Board. Yamalat, you're in. Thank you very much, and thank you for your service to the Board. You have been amazing. Next, I would like to nominate for our Board, Planning Board Secretary, Diana McGovern, for Board Secretary.
Attorney.
Attorney. We have a secretary, Board Attorney. Sorry, it's been a long day, and I'm pretty hoarse. You have to forgive me. I was like, it's been a long day. For Board Attorney, Diana McGovern Esquire. She has been a vital piece of our puzzle, an amazing helper to the Board, to me and to the Township. We appreciate everything you've done, and I recommend to the Board, we reappoint her as the Board Attorney. Does anybody else have any other nominations? Seeing none, I make a motion that we approve Diana McGovern as Board Attorney. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The eyes are above the nose. Motion carries. I had to get that in somewhere.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, now that the administrative things are taken care of, the minutes and resolutions, the minutes of 6/28/2023 for adoption, I make a motion, we adopt the minutes of 6/28/2023. Do I have a second?
Go move, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman Guarino, seconds. Do I have any corrections, additions, or deletions to the minutes? Seeing none, Yamalat, we move to vote.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Is there where you know?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mrs. Smeraldo?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
I understand I was not a member of the Board at that time.
Right, I'm sorry. Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Wilks?
Yes.
Chairman Bagh?
Yes. The minutes of December 6, 2023, West Orange Planning Board draft were sent out to be reviewed. I make a motion, we approve the minutes of 12/6/2023, West Orange Planning Board. They have a second? Second?
Second.
Mr. Smeraldo, seconds. Are there any additions or deletions or corrections? Seeing none. Yamalat on the motion.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Is there where you know? Mr. Guerino?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Mrs. Smeraldo?
Yes.
Council, um, sorry, Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Wilks?
Yes.
Chairman Bagh?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Mr. McGovern, would you swear in our professionals, please?
Yes, I see Mr. Greigle and Mr. Hess. Would you please raise your right hand? Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. I do.
Thank you. I would also like to take this a moment to thank Mr. Greigle and Mr. Hess for their outstanding service to the Planning Board and the Township of West Orange for 2023, and I hope we will continue to work together in 2024. And I want to ask you guys to stop bringing jokes.
You don't want to hear me.
You'll get my email shortly. Applications, PB 23-09, Essex County Country Club, Block 156, Lots 1, Zone R2, 350 Mount Pleasant Avenue. The applicant has requested adjournment to the February 7, 2023 Planning Board meeting. There will be no additional notice required. PB 23-11, Tompkins Realty LLC, Block 7, Lots 12.02, Zone RM 34 Tompkins Street. The applicant is proposing to subdivide an existing lot developed with a two-family home and relate improvements into two lots. The existing dwelling is proposed to remain in one lot, and a new two-family dwelling is proposed for the second lot. Mr. Richard Skolnick Esquire for the applicant.
Good evening, Chairman.
Good evening, sir. Get on the floor.
Thank you very much. Happy New Year. I'm getting some feedback.
Do you have a phone on, or maybe the speaker is somewhere close to another electronic?
I'm gonna move my phone away.
That sounds better.
That sounds better.
A little bit better, okay.
Turn your phone off.
That might have been late.
I don't, I don't have anything else on. I'll put on mute.
It's your magnetic personality.
Chairman and everyone assembled, Happy New Year. I'm representing Tompkins Realty LLC. As you mentioned, this is an application for minor subdivision approval with C variances. The address is 34 Tompkins Street, and we're identified as Block 7, Lot 12.02 on the tax maps. There is an existing two-family dwelling purchased by my client in December of 2021. After that purchase, he performed some substantial upgrades, which we'll go over briefly. The existing dwelling has frontage on Tompkins Street, and we're proposing to subdivide the parcel and to create one new tax lot. The plan calls for raising an existing dilapidated and worn-out garage that currently has frontage on Stockman Street, and we're proposing to construct a new two-family dwelling fronting on Stockman in place of that dilapidated garage. We're proposing four parking spaces on the ground level underneath two additional stories with two two-bedroom units, each with 1.5 baths and approximately 1,053 square feet of living area in each unit. The parcel itself is located in the RM zone, which allows for a variety of permitted uses, including two-family structures. Technically, since we're proposing a two-family on both a new and existing lot, site plan approval is not required for this application per EMLUL. We've reviewed the review letters, including Mr. Hess's November 29 letter. We don't have any issue with the technical comments and some requests for additional information, including construction details and so on that were raised in Mr. Hess's review letters. We can provide all of that information. He did raise an important concern about fire department review. We placed into the record an email from Captain Joe Matuloo, the fire official, that stated December 28, stating the fire office has no concerns about the application. Of note is that we're proposing some off-street parking for that existing dwelling that fronts on Tompkins. We don't think parking is an issue on Tompkins, but we've added two off-street parking spaces with porous pavers right in front of the existing dwelling. We suggest that the concept that's before the Board tonight with a new dwelling fronting on Stockman is a reasonable and appropriate use for this unique property, which has frontage on two streets. It removes an unsightly garage. It continues a redevelopment pattern in the area with an emphasis on quality residential investment. Importantly, we're going to suggest that this type of housing, units that are about 1,000 square feet, is workforce-type housing that's desperately needed. We're talking about smaller two-bedroom units, 1.5 baths, again with about 1,000 square feet each. You're going to hear from the owner about the rents being charged for the two existing units and the likely market rents. As Mr. Greigel noted in his review letter, we also have the Highland Avenue Railroad Station about two blocks to the east with additional bus stops in the vicinity. We believe we can add some reasonable density to the area in a fair and prudent manner without burdening the on-street parking situation that's often at play in infill projects like this. We appreciate that there's a number of variances that are at issue here, but many of them relate to the existing condition on the property with that dilapidated garage, as I've mentioned. In terms of our witnesses, Chairman, we have the applicant, Dr. Carmine Alonardo. I expect he'll be five to 10 minutes. And then we have our planner, Mr. Tobia. I expect him to be about 20 minutes altogether. That's the sum of who I'm intending to call. I do have our architect available, Frank Miletto, if necessary. We don't have a civil engineer. I had a discussion with Mr. Hess. The engineering issues are quite minor, and hopefully we can answer all of your concerns either through Mr. Miletto or Mr. Tobia to the extent that any engineering-type issues are raised. And again, we have no issues with the technical issues from Mr. Hess's review letter. With that, Chairman, we're ready to get started by calling Dr. Carmine Alonardo.
You have the force, sir.
Okay, may I have him sworn in, please?
Hey, Carmine's going first?
Carmine first.
Okay, Mr. Alonardo, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Hey, Dr. Alonardo, you've had involvement in West Orange in your personal and professional career. Could you just give a little bit of your background and talk about what you did when you bought the building and how you rehabbed it as well?
Been a resident of West Orange since I was three. I moved out, you know, several years ago to East Hanover, but grew up there. Purchased the building from my mother-in-law and brother-in-law back in December of '21. The house was not in good shape, and since then, we had recited, put new windows in, landscaped, and cleaned out the entire basement that was filled with much debris, fire hazard, sealed everything, put a new bathroom in and the first floor. Redid all the plumbing for upstairs and downstairs. And so we concentrated on the existing home. Now that the garage there is just, is falling apart, I just thought it'd be good to fix that up and make, make it useful.
Okay, could you just talk for a second about the rents that you're charging for the existing units and the size of those units?
So the first floor is a single bedroom, pretty good size. We charge, we started at 900, and we recently raised it to 12. And then the upstairs is 1750 for a three-bedroom. So they have, they have a little boy. We're trying to make things reasonable.
Okay, and can you tell us what you anticipate the market might bear for the, for the new house, for the, for the two units, potentially?
Oh, I was wrong, okay. It was 1150 downstairs, not 1200. Anyway, um, my wife corrected me. So for that, we're trying to keep that under certain amounts that we noticed in West Orange. About 2,000 would be under market, but reasonable.
Okay, so, so you purchased the place about two years ago. You fixed it up a good bit, and your concept for the rear is to put up a small two-story structure?
Correct.
Hey, anything else you want? Anything else you want?
You get, and get the garage. I mean, it's ready to fall down, so it would be nice to have it look good, and aesthetically, it's, it would be better for the, for the area, in my, my opinion.
Okay, anything else, sir?
Uh, no, I think I'm good.
Okay, Chairman, that's what I have with Dr. Alonardo.
Hey, do any members of the Board have any questions, Mr. Alonardo, Mayor McCartney?
Chairman, I have no questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Rutherford?
It looks to me, thank you, Chairman, it looks to me like there will be six off-street parking spots. Is that right?
Six off-street? No, I believe we're going to have the garage contain four parking spots, so there will be no on-street parking for Stockman. And the Tompkins' house already has on-street. So we don't, we, they never, they never used the garage before.
So. Mr. Tobia will clarify that, but we're proposing, under the new structure, four spaces, stacked two and two. And then if the Board thinks it's a good idea for the Tompkins' house, we can do some porous pavers out front. There's no real issue about parking, and it's not overly crowded in our view, but we can get off-street parking with, with, by doing a driveway of porous pavers on the existing Tompkins. So it'd be the four plus the two, so it does come to six.
Thank you. That was the clarity I was looking for. You know, I know it may not seem like a parking issue now, but you know, we get tons of parking complaints in that, in that corridor. But six is, that was the question that I had. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Wilks?
Um, no questions.
Thank you, Mr. Albert.
None at this time. Thank you.
Vice Chairman Guarino?
No questions at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Klein?
Yeah, so explain to me, I don't see a site plan of what the Tompkins' side would look like if you put parking on the Tompkins' side. Would that be tandem as well with one curb cut? Or would it be a double side-by-side? Mr. Tobia is gonna go over that. All right. There's a small depiction of, in the, in the front of the house where there'd be room for two cars with some porous pavers. But Mr. Tobia is gonna.
Yeah, that, so it doesn't make any sense. It looks like it's, well, it's 20 feet, all right. You're gonna pick up a half a parking space on this?
We, we think we'll.
It seems like the math isn't gonna work. You're gonna take away two off the street, and you're gonna take them away because you're gonna end up with a 20-foot-wide driveway, so yeah.
Discuss that. We think we're gonna lose one, lose one on the street to pick up two.
Yeah, because you're plus one. All right, whatever. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Klein. Mr. Smeraldo?
The only question I have is, based on, you said the rates of the existing home, which are well below the fair market rate, are you intending to be within the fair market rate also for this, especially for this particular area of the community?
I think what we're trying to say, this is, on a site like this, a smaller lot, it's naturally created affordable housing, sort of, right? The marketplace is gonna create this of a, of a place where people making a rent, the median, or, you know, I don't want to characterize it exactly, but this is gonna be at a price point because of the size, the location, gonna create naturally occurring housing that is more affordable than some other options in the area, let's just say.
Okay, yeah, I just ask you because I, I commend them for, because the other two units, they're well below market rate, so that's, that's nice. I might ask you for the rates, but, you know, if it's consistent like that, that's good for the neighborhood, so thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cardoza?
No questions at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Hess?
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Greigle.
Just one question, with regard to the, just wanna make sure I have it right, the bedrooms in the existing dwelling, you said it's a one-bedroom on the first floor currently?
One bedroom, first floor.
And two bedrooms on the second?
It's actually three, because it, yeah.
Got it, okay.
There's, there's another floor with another bedroom. Yes.
Got it, okay. Just as that impacts the parking requirements, more technical than anything else, but I just wanted to have that on the record. Great, thank you.
What is, what is the parking requirement for that amount of bedrooms?
Um, I was just looking at that. That's interesting, for two bedroom, two families. It's 1.5 for a two-bedroom, two spaces per for a three-bedroom. I'm trying to remember, have to look at the ordinance to make sure that, to see whether that's, you put the two together or not. I just double-check that.
Okay.
Before that in the meeting, or Mr. Tobia, I could maybe discuss that later.
Good, okay, good. Do any members of the public have any questions for Dr. Alonardo on his testimony? Do any members of the public have any questions for Dr. Alonardo on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
I'm not seeing any.
Great, seeing none. Thank you, Dr. Alonardo.
Thank you. I did want to say, though, real quick, the, the two tenants that are living in the house are, they, they would like to be on the Zoom. They just don't have the Zoom, to have Zoom to, to join, but they were in favor of what we're doing.
Thank you, sir. You're right.
Chairman, we're gonna call Michael Tobia, a professional planner, if I could have him sworn, please.
Yes, please.
Okay, Mr. Tobia, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and does, Mr. Tobia have the ability to share his screen?
Yeah, wait, wait.
I think that was set up beforehand. Yeah.
Why, dear Mr. Tobia, please, the Board and the public.
You have to, you have to get him as an expert, approve him as an expert.
Yes, of course. Your qualifications, Mr. Tobia?
Sure, so hello, everyone, and Happy New Year. Michael Tobia, the applicant's planning consultant. I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I've been practicing now for 42 years exclusively in this field, with degrees from Rutgers and NJIT long ago. I've now made appearances before over 200 planning boards, zoning boards, and governing bodies in the state, as well as appearances in municipal and state court, and appearances before the West Orange Planning Board.
Mr. Tobia, your license is still valid as of today in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Skolnick, we accept, unless any members of the Board have any questions, we accept Mr. Tobia as a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey. Sir, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Michael, you've had a chance to review the application. You've been to the site. You're familiar with the variances at issue. Could you provide the Board with your analysis of, of the case in light of the criteria?
Okay, yes, thank you, Mrs. Skolnick. So, um, we started off describing we started off describing this, it's a subdivision application. There were variances which are accurately depicted in the notice and Mr. Greigle's report as well, and they, just broadly speaking, are for lot area, lot area per dwelling, front yard setback, and side yard setback. Building coverage, impervious coverage, as we now show the plan before you, setback variance for the proposed parking in the front yard of the existing home, and rear yard setback. One important theme of the case board members is that, as Mr. Skolnik said, several of the variances that are in our list are existing non-conforming conditions as well with the garage. Okay, we'll get into that more in a moment. So what we're looking for is approval of a subdivision app, and approval to retain the existing home at thirty-four Tompkins to build a new home on Stockman Street. Now, if I've allowed, I'd like to share a screen, and we'll walk you through the site photographically, and then the, the plan set, which includes a subdivision plan and an architectural plan. So let's see if I can do this.
Okay, Mr. Tobio, during your testimony, will you identify each variance, C1, C2, and rationale for the board's reasoning for granting it in your estimation as a licensed planner?
Yes, I will, Mr. Chairman. Largely, Mr. Chairman, what we're talking about is here is a C2 case, okay? We do have some hardships, if you will, because our lot's thirty feet wide. Okay, can't do a lot with a thirty-foot-wide lot. But broadly, what we're gonna say is that the benefits of these variances, taken as a whole, far outweigh any detriment. You'll hear why in a moment, okay? So now we should go to my PowerPoint. And how's that looked, everybody? Can you see it, right? Okay.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Skolnik, let's introduce this, okay?
Okay.
And we'll get an electronic copy of the Yomlet, Yomlet in tomorrow morning's email.
Okay, let's mark this as A1, please.
Yes, thank you.
So this is
What would you like to call this, Michael?
This is a nineteen sheet PowerPoint presentation, today's date on it. The photographs you see were taken on December twelfth of last year, and December twenty-sixth of last year. The site identification is on the title sheet, Mr. Skolnik has handled that already. Okay, so, let's go. I'm gonna stay here. This is an aerial photo of the area. Stockton, or Tompkins Street, as I should say, runs from top to bottom, slightly left of center of the slide, and our back street, Stockman Street, off to the right from top to bottom. The site is located dead center on this slide. The, the home in question, thirty-four Tompkins, is shown with my pointer, and it's a through lot, meaning we have frontage on both streets. One of the unique characteristics of the property is frontage on both streets, with a building up front that looks great, a building in the back that's very modest. The area, as you see here, all of which is in the RM zone, is a hodgepodge of development. Tompkins Street has a fairly established residential character. There are new apartments being built across the street from us, but there also are some commercial and industrial properties that dot Tompkins as well as Stockman. Stockman, as you'll see in a moment, toward the east of this slide, has several home sites on it, pretty attractive homes, but the majority of the street has no face to it, has no residential character. And you see some parking lots on Slide Two, heavy industrial use at the bottom of Stockman, and a lot of non-residential streetscape features, which I'll explain to you more in a moment. Now, this is thirty-four Tompkins. What Mr. Alonardo shared with you a moment ago was a long list of improvements he made to this home in the last two years, totaling tens of thousands of dollars. This is what the home now looks like, one bedroom down, three bedrooms up, no onsite parking right now. Now, Mr. Rutherford and Mr. Klein, the proposal would be, just so you can understand it, would be to remove the hedgerow, install two parking spaces to the left side of Slide Three, that would park head-on into the existing building. One on-street spot would be removed, two would be added, and presumably, one would be dedicated to the apartment on the lower floor, one to the apartment up. This would bring, right now, the site has no parking for thirty-four Tompkins. It would bring it closer to compliance with RSIS parking, not into compliance, but it's the best we can do to give dedicated parking to the home. Slide Four. And again, you can see here our existing home at thirty-four Tompkins. The hedgerow, that would be removed, and the curb cut would be right in front of the car you see in this slide, that would allow parking in front of the building. Note, as we go through the next couple slides, the nice residential character on Tompkins. Almost every home in the area has at least a two-and-a-half-story massing, if not a three-story massing, as you see here on our neighbor at thirty-six Tompkins. Most of the smaller homes in the structure in, in the area are one or two-family homes. These are for the smaller structures on the street. And you'll see this character on Slide Five. This is the really good news about Tompkins Street, a nice established residential character, uniform front yard setbacks, newly constructed sidewalk, and the things you like to see in front of smaller residential homes, such as shrubs and fences. Okay, I want you to keep an eye on Slide Five as we move around the corner to Stockman Street. And here we are on Stockman, Slide Six. This is the existing garage on the site. Mr. Alonardo's house is at the very back of Slide Six, whereas the three-bay, dilapidated garage on Stockman is in the foreground. It's about twenty-seven feet wide. The setbacks off of the property line are very minor, it's a thirty-foot-wide lot. So we have about three feet of combined side yard setback north and south of the existing garage. This slide says a couple things to us. One, it's falling down, and two, it adds no residential character to Stockman street in a zone that permits single-family, two-family, and multifamily housing. None of the residential characters provided by what's out on the site now. So, perhaps the most important slide in the presentation, as we speak, Mr. Chairman, to the C2 variance, is a, is a simple argument. Providing a new home on this site, two-family building, would replace a dilapidated structure, a structure with several non-conforming conditions, and a structure that adds a real commercial view to what's supposed to be a residential street. The reason it's the most useful slide in the set is you can see the garage in the foreground, and you can see the applicant's house in the background. So the background is thirty-four Tompkins, and the contrast between the two is evident. The proposal is to take another residential structure, in our case, three stories, bring it down, replace the garage. Garage would be demolished, and then the new unit would come up into this area and provide massing similar to some of the other homes in the area. So that's the garage looking north on Stockman. Slide Eight is the garage looking the other way south. You can see from this slide, Stockman has some industrial uses on the street, more on that in a moment. But this is just another view intended to demonstrate the garage is a mess and unfitting for a residential area. Okay, Slide Nine, we're gonna walk you through some land use in the area. Two big themes here. One is, there are a number of intrusions into the land use pattern along Tompkins, and especially Stockman, that run contrary to the intent and purpose of the RM zone. Right next to us is an industrial concern, it's called New Jersey Doors and Closets. Front yard parking, rear yard parking, an open shed element nearest thirty-four Tompkins, which is shown here on the right of this slide, and pretty well-kept property, but not something permitted by zoning. Here's the back of that same use, now we're back on Stockman. This abuts our site to the north, and it's not what we're supposed to have in the neighborhood. Slide Eleven. As you move along Stockman, both to the north and south of our site, you get things that really are not contemplated by the RM zone. Here, planners like to call this garage door architecture. We have a couple of outbuildings on Stockman, three-bay garage in the foreground, a two-bay barn-type structure toward the north side or right of the slide, again, that don't add residential character to the street. Now we move south on Stockman, and a couple of things happen. More non-residential structures in the form of a modest garage, which does a butt, a home up on Tompkins. And then you see another element on Stockman that's, that really saps the residential character of the street, namely fencing. Okay, these are fences built right on the property line, and they don't allow for any positive visual impact on Stockman. Also on Stockman, industrial uses. Okay, not a permitted use. I hope illegally existing non-conforming use, but not what we're supposed to have out here. There is good news on Stockman, and that is right across the street from our site, moving northward, on sixteen, eighteen, twenty, and twenty-two Stockman, moving from left to right, are some really nice homes. As you can see, they're all two-and-a-half story buildings, so they have at least a partial third floor on all of them. Note here, when we talk about setbacks, the homes on Stockman are basically built up close to the sidewalk, meaning they have minimal front yard setbacks, whereas we have a minimal front yard setback of five feet. The lots in this area that house single-family and two-family homes are on lots generally thirty, forty feet wide. They cannot provide the side yard setbacks required in the zone, and the pattern of development in the zone cannot provide the thirty-foot front yard setback required. So when I talk about the site plan in a moment, the theme will be what we're proposing in terms of setbacks is more or less consistent with what's out in the neighborhood. So that's Slide Fourteen. We're gonna go back to Fifteen for a second, and again, emphasize residential character here. This is what the RM zone calls for. In many ways, most importantly, the two-family use is a permitted use in the zone. And in terms of appearance and streetscape, this is a winner. The choice before the board tonight is, do we want a winner, residential character, high residential character home, with a great curb appeal, or leave the site as it is with the garage? Let's go, and I'm not the project architect, Mr. Miletto is here, but I'll go through a couple basics with you as a planner, and then if you have architectural questions, we'll turn those over to Mr. Miletto, but lower center of Slide Sixteen from the architectural plans is the intended front facade of the building. Although it's three stories, in a zone that permits two-and-a-half, the height of the building is thirty-one feet, which is four feet less than what's permitted in the zone. So through the use of eight-foot floors, we've achieved a compliant building height. Building will be about twenty-seven feet wide, brick front, stone accent, divided lights on all the windows, self-parked. This building will be, have four parking stalls proposed under, as you've heard from Mr. Skolnik, with Okay, so, this will have more parking than required by RSIS. Upstairs will be two duplex-style units, meaning you'll have living room, kitchen, dining, and a powder room on one floor. You'll walk up a set of staircase, and on the top floor will be your bedrooms, two bedrooms each, one bath. So this will be a one-and-a-half-bath unit. In a clever additional use of the space, our architect is putting a rooftop amenity in the form of a patio for each unit, staircase up to the top roof. These will be enclosed by a forty-two-inch parapet for safety purposes, and then the patios, of course, will operate as a recreational amenity. The sides and back of the building will be stucco-finished on the facade. Slide Seventeen. This is the subdivision plan dated August twenty-eighth of last year. Let me see if I can give you a little zoom on this. Okay. So with Tompkins, on the bottom of the slide, Stockman on the top. The plan is to create a subdivision line. Subdivision line is roughly two-thirds of the way back from Tompkins. The existing home would stay. The existing sidewalk out to the front would stay. Mr. Alonardo just renovated the front porch, looks great, that would stay. Now, Mr. Rutherford and Mr. Klein, here, this checkerboard graphic in the lower-left of the subdivision plan is the intended parking area. Eighteen feet deep, nineteen feet wide. It is roughly the width of one on-street parking stall, maybe a little bit less. That would create two parking stalls on site. It creates approximately three hundred and fifty square feet of impervious, not found on the site now. But the detail that we're talking about would be to make this a grass paver area. The board should be familiar with that, that would mean, would be stabilized with a cementitious material with holes in it that allows grass to grow up and provide a green element when the cars are not parked on it. I'll tell you now, we thought this was the better idea, okay? This is a site that does not have parking on Tompkins for this use. My investigation of Tompkins, as well as Mr. Alonardo's considerable experience with the street, is that we don't have an on-street parking problem here. Okay, the regulations are kind of alternate side of the street parking on both Tompkins and Stockman. Having been out there a number of times, maybe you're at sixty, seventy percent of parking on the street, occupied parking stalls most of the time. Mr. Alonardo has indicated to us, his clients have never complained about parking on the street, they've been there roughly ten years. Nevertheless, we thought to have a self-sufficient parking plan for thirty-four Tompkins would be a good idea. If the board doesn't like this concept, we can remove it easily with a, with a minor plan revision, and go back to an existing condition where the existing tenants would park their cars on Tompkins. Okay. Mr. Chairman, so we'll go through variances just quickly with the graphic up. The main ones would be coverage for both building, buildings, as well as impervious. Although if we remove the front yard parking of thirty-four Tompkins, we would remove the coverage variance for that lot. On the new building, our front yard setback is proposed at five feet. As you saw before, most of the homes on the street only come back roughly five feet from the existing curb line, or right-of-way line, I should say. uh, from the existing uh, curb line, or right-of-way line, I should say. Side yard setbacks would also require variances. The new building is basically proposing the same side yard setbacks as the existing grush. The trade-off there is easy. Do you want a modest old garage with those setbacks or a new home with those setbacks? I think the benefits of the many things that would happen with a new home would outweigh the detriments um, for a lot that already has side yard setback deficiencies. Rear yard um, has a um, thirty-foot requirement from the proposed property line to each of the, the buildings, existing and proposed. Instead, the applicant proposes a six-foot setback uh, behind the two-family home to be built, ten point seven feet behind the existing two-family home. Uh, the applicants indicated to me, the plan back here is just to create some green space um, for uh, the tenants uh, to be used for uh, passive open space. Okay, um, to put the parking in front of thirty-four uh, Tompkins would require a setback variance off the uh, um, northerly property line, five feet's required, it's about two-point-five feet off the property line. We can't move it further south because we would disturb the sidewalk leading to the house. Um, moreover, another variance would be needed for the percentage of the front yard covered by parking area. That same variance would apply to the side yard covered by parking area. Once again, in a neighborhood that has um, oh, for the, the single and two-family homes, almost no onsite parking, we think the benefits here of one property on Tompkins and one on Stockman that does provide parking would be a benefit that outweighs our requested variance detriment. Um, our slide here, uh, eighteen, our final slide. Um, we colorize the plan, Tompkins Street in this case on the left, Stockman on the right. Um, the paperstone product we're illustrating for the proposed parking area is lower left. And this helps you understand the existing home and the proposed two-family home. Okay, now, I wanna go back, uh, just a few more minutes, Mr. Chairman, I'll wrap up. Um, let's go, um, I think I said slide seven. So, under C two, remember, we, we have a, an important Supreme case called Kaufman, which says you can use the C variance tool to promote the better zoning alternative. Back in the day, and I think Kaufman goes back to nineteen eighty-eight, the Supreme Court said, "We need flexibility in our variance tools. You don't always have to show hardship." You don't always have to show practical difficulty. You can present a case to a planning board or a zoning board that in plain language says, "What's better?" The newly proposed element with variances or the existing condition? And if your overall project benefits um, have benefits so significant that they outweigh the detriments, it's a grantable variance or variances. Slide seven is up here, uh, because in plain language, thirty-four Tompkins looks great. And the garage on Stockman, which is unnumbered, by the way, doesn't look so hot. Um, this is a thirty-foot wide lot, as I said. Um, there's no way around variances, and usually when we deal with older developed lots, you tend to get a longer list of variances. When you look at this, um, and you balance, it's my conclusion that Stockman needs a shot in the arm. Some of the elements we showed you before, such as old garages here on slide eight, fencing uh, right on the property line facing the street, um, garage door architecture on Stockman Street, um, are not uh, the types of elements you want um, on a site-zoned RM. In an area, by the way, as I've become familiar with it, where there's been significant um, improvement through the construction of residential developments, both big and small. We have a redevelopment job, as you know, across Mitchell, across Tompkins, there's a new apartment building going up. They're the good-looking buildings in the area. What Mr. Alonardo did makes his property of thirty-four Tompkins one of the good-looking buildings in the area. We think the back of the property deserves the same. So, for those reasons, um, we think the variances are justified. We think um, they meet goals A, C, E, G, I, and H of the Municipal Land Use Law for the reasons stated. We will turn our attention quickly to the negative criteria. We don't think this would be a substantial detriment nor a substantial impairment. Aesthetics here would be improved dramatically, promoting a desirable visual environment. Parking um, will be more or less self-sufficient. One building will be fully compliant with RSIS. The other will be two new stalls with three and a half required. So we're moving in the right direction with that proposed parking. Um, removing blighted buildings is always a good idea for us planners. That will happen here. That's not a detriment to anyone. Um, we're placing this, incidentally, in an area, uh, as Mr. Skolnick said, two blocks away from the train station. We clock it at point-two miles, very walkable. We notice there's a bus stop out there also, um, next to the train station that's on Scotland Road. So we're promoting walkability and use of mass transit as well. We do have a sign-off from the fire department. Um, and to wrap up, whether your master plan, Mr. Greigall, it looks like he prepared it in two thousand and nineteen. Page eight says, "Encourage the preservation of the township's neighborhoods." We think we're doing that. We're enhancing the neighborhood. Um, says page eight also, these are goals of the master plan. "Provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for residential uses." It's precisely what we're doing here. Page nine, another goal says, "Promote desirable visual environments." We promote that goal. Page ten, importantly, says, "Improve and maintain existing residential neighborhoods." Um, probably the most important, important part of the case is this would be an improvement to Stockman, big improvement. Page thirty says, "Maintain appropriate scale of development." When you go through the neighborhood, as I said, um, and we'll move up a couple slides here to slide fourteen. There's good stuff happening out on Stockman. It doesn't meet side yard setbacks, it does not meet front yard setbacks, doesn't have parking onsite. Um, and yet it works. These, as I shared with you before, slightly north of the property, one lot north of the property, opposite side of the street. Um, so, uh, this is the neighborhood character we're looking to uh, complement and enhance. Um, so, um, I think that's all I wanted to cover. Mr. Skolnick, you'll remind me if I miss something. And if not, I'll be happy to take questions.
Thank you, Michael. If you just touch briefly uh, on the idea that I had raised in my opening of uh, creating some moderately priced housing uh, through, through market forces. And, you know, and how, how that may uh, provide some benefit. It's two units, but it's still two, two, uh, two families that are gonna have an opportunity to move into a nice new place uh, as well, at a, at a, uh, a, a median income level, let's call it.
A good price point, um, one of the benefits of maintaining smaller units is lower price point for housing, okay? These would be two beds each, um, and um, you mentioned workforce before, Rick. Um, it's free market, unregulated, one step up from all the work we've done with lower-income housing. Um, and that's clearly a benefit to the neighborhood. Whether one unit, two, or more cannot be um, underestimated in terms of its importance.
And that's reflected in the municipal land use law, which calls for appropriate population densities.
Good, yeah, well, that's one of the goals I mentioned, okay? And uh, yes, that's a great point. This, you know, when you look at the neighborhood, and for instance, on the slide we have up now, so it would be um, the house on the far left and the white one in the middle are two-family homes. Um, the other two are singles. When you look at the neighborhood, two-family homes are commonplace. That's the appropriate density for the area.
So we have sort of the twin uh, elements here. Uh, an aesthetic improvement and a cleanup on the one hand, and then providing some housing for, for moderate income uh, citizens of the area.
Right, yes.
Okay, anything else, Michael?
I, um, no, let's, let's see if we have any questions, um. I think I forgot something. I'll, I'll raise my hand. Don't worry, Rick.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Chairman, uh, that concludes the, the presentation. As I mentioned, uh, we have the architect available, uh, if you have specifics uh, on that part of it.
Great, uh, Mr. Tobia, so the, the law case you referred to is New Jersey Supreme Court Kaufman versus the township of Wa- I'm sorry, hang on one second.
Of Warren.
Warren, Warren, right.
Okay, Warren Township. Planning Board, the Planning Board for Warren Township was the Kaufman case.
Right.
It was argued in nineteen eighty-eight.
Good, so I was, I guess.
And you feel that this is on, you feel that this is on point here?
It's directly on point, you know, that, that was such an important case that for us planners and lawyers became known as the flexible C variance, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, good, um, and um, um, yeah, so it's really on point here. The other one I would share with you, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman. So Skolnick and I were talking about this the other day. Pullen, P-U-L-L-E-N, the township of South Plainfield was a case, um, nineteen ninety-seven, nineteen, um, ninety-six, I'm sorry, that said, um, overall project benefits can be included in the discussion of the C variance. And what it was getting at was I don't have to establish a specific benefit for, let's say, a side yard setback variance, okay? I don't have to assign a specific benefit for coverage, by way of example. When you look at the overall benefit of the job, um, that can be the, 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 the foundation for the granting of a C variance. So that's the Pullen case.
Okay, Pullen versus the township of South Plainfield.
South Plainfield, right.
Okay. Okay, so, just for the record, so the members of the board will refresh your memory. A C two variance state how the purpose of the municipal land use law would be advanced by a deviation from the zoning ordinance requirements, and the benefits of the deviation would be substantially outweigh any detriment according to NJSA forty colon fifty-five D, there's seventy C two. Please list all the benefits and the deviations of the township and see how the benefits and deviations substantially outweigh the detriment. So, just to recap, I wanna have this clear in my mind. With you taking away a garage, this is not a refurbishing of a garage, the garage is gone, absolutely gone. So, we, so this now engages, um, tell you in a second, uh, all requirements of the West Orange COA obligation will be put into the resolution, because you're not refurbishing, you fix, you're, you're getting rid of the garage, done. The second thing is, um, I, I, as many of the board members have done, have made a side visit. So this is gonna be a flat roof. Are you gonna put any greenery on the top of the roof?
We, um, have room. And don't forget red zoning, Mr. Chairman, not, you know, our construction plans, but, um, let me um, try and zoom in here. And we are now on slide sixteen, lower right is the roof plan. Um, and we have two separate patios, by the way, so these would be private patios. There is room on each one for planters, if that's what you're, you're conjuring up.
I'm, I'm just, I wanna, I wanna ask the board as we deliberate. Uh, first of all, uh, any, any area that's open should be a white roof to decrease the heat island effect. Secondly, if you can put planters in there, that will be maintained in perpetuity. That'll also be very nice.
Okay.
Um, what's the distance between the back of the existing structure and the new structure? How much land is in between? And where would you keep the garbage?
So, uh, okay, first question again, please, Mr. Chairman.
What's the difference between the two buildings? And is there any uh, place to walk out from the existing building to the new building?
Okay, so, uh, the answer is, um, sixteen point seven feet between the two buildings. Trash at thirty-four Tompkins now is, um, toward the front of the property, um, right-hand side. And folks are just dragging their trash cans out to the street. I would suspect, and I'm back on uh, slide sixteen, what we would do for uh, Stockman for the new building would be trash cans in the garage. Okay, um, and uh, take it out to Stockman. The other opportunity there could be uh, to go out to the back, but I think it would be easier um, through the man door with each grush.
Okay, so in, in the final resolution, um, the applicant will have to work out where the gor- where a- as a condition, where the gar- where the garbage will be stored for pickup. So it should not be left outside the building or on the street.
Agreed.
Okay, good. Um, now, would the applicant consider, would it make sense to have one parking spot in front of thirty-four uh, Tompkins as opposed to two parking spots? Just saying, you'll keep some more greenery and uh, if you, so you'll have one more on-street parking. Now the question becomes, you, you do have that new, as you mentioned, uh, you have that new building across the street. Are they, do they have parking onsite? Or do you know, or will they also be using on-street parking?
Uh, as up, so I read, um, the planner's report on that job, um, this afternoon, actually, this morning, um, and they do not have parking onsite. They requested a variance. They did a parking study to justify no parking onsite, um, and, uh, and they don't. Uh, they mentioned the opportunity to park on the street as well as, I think what you all call Harvard, uh, printing.
Yeah, down the block.
Is that what it is? The, the deck across Mitchell Street, um, so they don't. Now, um, I've talked to Mr. Alonardo about this, um, the other day. Um, we'll do what you want on parking in front of thirty-four Tompkins.
Well, I, I wouldn't wanna make it a hardship to rent the space, is what I'm saying. I'm just saying, you keep some more greenery, it, it's a, I, as, again, I was there, it's a, it's a beautiful frontage, done a very nice job on that building. Uh, if possible, I would try and keep at least one spot, but if this is gonna compromise the parking on the street, because now you have neighbors that will be parking, this could cause a problem for his property. Just something to think about, and the board will deliberate now. I'll ask our planner to weigh in on this, uh, as we get to him. Um, okay, so I'm gonna do my usual round robin here. Uh, Mayor McCartney, do you have any questions for Mr. Tobia?
Well, Chairman, so first I want to commend the Alonardos for their investment on Tompkins Street and on Stockton, Stockman. Um, I just recently walked that area with the developer on Central Avenue. And the apartments on Central Avenue are one hundred percent occupied. So our next mission is to work with New Jersey Transit on making that a stop. So I think, uh, the timing of this investment for the Alonardos is, uh, excellent. And again, I commend them for their investment in the appearance and the streetscape. I do have questions, though, about uh, the hedgerow in front of thirty-four Tompkins. It's what I just heard, if you can go back to that slide. It seemed like what you were suggesting is that the hedgerow would come down to allow for parking. And I know it is such an issue in the whole valley area. Parking is such an airshow. So, all right, so that's the slide. You are suggesting that there would be a curb cut there to allow parking in front of- You are suggesting that there would be a curb cut there to allow parking in front of. That newly remodeled house.
So, yes, fair.
Next to it, I mean, I'm looking at all the historical significance of the area. Tell me, please, Mr. Tobia, what you're saying.
Yep. So the answer is yes. The proposal would be. Probably to eliminate three quarters of the hedgerow to privet hedge. And I, I hope you can see my pointer, but the northerly. Three corridors of that would be removed. It has to be removed if we're going for parking. There's a sidewalk that leads from the front door directly out to the street. We need to preserve that.
Okay.
And by the way, Mr. Chairman, the trash enclosure area right off to the right of the front door.
Perfect.
Works fine.
Will cars, will that allow cars to park on the side of the house as well?
No, no, just in front. They'll nose up to the existing porch and they'll have to back out onto the street.
But. We are not wed to this and I, I think the chairman suggested, well, is there a compromise? And we'd be happy with that as well.
So I, I, I have a question for Dr. Alonardo. Is, is this structure occupied presently?
It is.
Does anybody have problems with parking now?
They've been living there for like ten years, Mr. Tobia said, and never once have they had an issue. And since I took it over. There's, every time I've come down to visit or speak with them, there's always been plenty of parking. The issue is the other new place.
Right.
Yeah, but for them, it, it never an issue. And I do like those hedges because I made them look so nice.
You and your landscaper did a beautiful job there, Doc.
Yes, I, 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 it just looks pretty.
Yeah, you know, and the character of the street, it fits in with the character of the street. Um, and, and I'm always weighing, I, I understand. What could be? And I understand that you're thinking to the future. The board will have to decide. So we'll, we'll keep that in abeyance. I'm sorry, Mayor McCartney, do you have more questions?
Uh, no, that was really just my only concern because there is so much investment going on that we daylighted the stream on Central Avenue. Again, I said that the orange side and the west orange side, they're mirror images of each other. They are one hundred percent occupied. I think it's just an amazing investment and they're still, you know, we already approved the ninety-four acres. I mean, the ninety-four units to be yet to be built. So remediation is still underway. I'm just a little uncomfortable about the hedgerow.
Okay, I got a couple of more ideas, but let's hear from the rest of the board.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Council President Rutherford, do you have any questions for Mr. Tobia?
Uh, thank you, Chairman. I do, I wanted to thank you for addressing the rooftop. I wanted to know what that looked like as well. So the units that are being proposed or that are being built, I believe it's by the Alper Group. Is that seventeen total units that are going on Tompkins Street that do not have parking?
It's seventeen, Tompkins Street is the address. I'm sorry. Someone else can answer it. I just know that it's seventeen, Tompkins Street is the address and there is parking available there. And twenty-two spaces are available on Central Avenue for those residents.
So the new development does or does not, it was just stated that the new development on Tompkins does not have parking.
On site.
Right.
Okay, so they're parking at the other building, the larger building down the street. Off street. Okay. So what is this, what is the, the Stockman Street side, the front yard setback? That is going to be about how many feet? And then I know it's a, the statement was made that it's about the same as the others. What is the, you know, usual or average setback on Stockman Street and what will this one be?
So here, here's slide five, Mr. Rutherford, if you can see that. First of all, the applicant's proposing a five-foot setback off of Stockman on. Its side of the street. Across the street, you can see what's going on here. Um, and, and you know, look at the little pickup truck here. We know that's probably sixteen, seventeen feet in depth. The front yard setback along that street, I think, is very comparable to what's being proposed by the applicant. Which means basically you're going to have a sidewalk and then a, 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 a small setback after that. And certainly not a thirty footer. So the conclusion is it would be consistent with what we see on the street.
Is, is there? No, please go ahead.
I think Council President asked you, what is the minimum by code? If I'm incorrect, and that's thirty feet, and then he asked, what is it going to be? And it's going to be five feet. Is that five feet with a new parking in it?
No, so remember, we're on Stockman now. There will be no front yard surface parking. Here, so that would just be to the front of the garage doors.
And the width of the sidewalk is three feet?
Sidewalks are usually four feet, Mr. Rutherford.
So there's going to be one foot between the sidewalk and the front of the garage door?
We're going to zoom in here. Hold on a second, please, slide seventeen. And they'll show you what's going on. So. Now we're on Stockman. The new building is cross-tatched, okay? And the sidewalk will be in the right of way. Before you get to the property line. So then you'll have five feet basically of an apron leading from the road into the garage.
Got it. So it's five feet from the sidewalk, not five feet from the street.
You got it. Yep.
Okay, that's, that clarifies it for me. And then, and then is that the same distance that the current garage structure is? Or will it be further setback than that, closer to the street?
Improved, Mr. Rutherford. So on the existing garage, hold on a second, please. Is two point four feet. So now we're going back to five feet.
Got it. Thank you. Is there, are you anticipating a fence separating these two properties or is there some natural? Division between the two properties or what are you anticipating there?
I don't, you know, that, I, I'd leave that up to the applicant. It's flat back there. It can be open. It can be fenced. I don't know.
Possible they could share a backyard? Is that what you're anticipating?
Say it again, please.
So it's, it's possible that they could share so that there wouldn't appear to be such a little or limited space behind the new building? Is that what you're?
That's true. And that's probably the way I would go with it because it'll make it look like a bigger yard.
As much, as much bushes or greenery, I like, I like that. So that would be my request.
I think the question, Doctor, is the anticipated, that'll be sort of a shared backyard since we're going to be in a rental situation?
We could. I mean, whatever's best, I'm up for.
Can you go back to the architectural plans? There's no exit from the building on Tompkins to get to the backyard. Stockman, I'm sorry, Stockman.
Stockman.
And there's shrubs on the, in the two point three foot, right? There's no door in the back. Rear elevation, just four windows. So you can't get to the backyard. The backyard is by default going to be.
Locked off.
Stockman's are going to be.
You could remove the, the side where the tree is. There's, there's three feet, I think, on either side. We were going to remove all that. Uh, take out all the, the, the brush. And then, and make like a little walkway because you needed an, an easement before, I think, to come through the R.
It's like two point three feet wide.
Right.
Something like that.
Did you, as applicant, think about a man door toward the back of the property to get out to the back?
Out of the garages, yeah.
Yep.
Yes, you could add that. I mean, that would be up to the architect, I'd say.
Well, the other thing is, you just mentioned an easement. Mr. Hash, did you or Mr. Gregley, you hear anything about an easement?
I don't think he meant a formal easement. I think he meant a pathway.
Pathway. Sorry. That's okay. I just want to be sure.
No, there's, there's only two point three feet on, which is the widest on that one side. I, I, to be honest, I don't think that's enough to be able to put a walkway through. And have people comfortably walking on that to get into the backyard.
Yeah, it's not going to be.
They're going to be turned sideways.
Yeah, it's not going to be ADA compliant. Yeah, it won't be ADA compliant.
Right.
So. Look, we, we have our architect on board. We could ask him about a man door off the back of the garage, if you like.
Okay, well, we'll get there. That's a good question.
Okay.
Yeah, and it, you know, I'm, I'm a layman and I'm new to this, so please, you know, extend some grace to me. Is it, is it? Uh, usual and customary to, to only have a front entrance and not a rear entrance? It seems like that might be an issue if there were an emergency.
So let's, we're gonna, if it's okay with Mr. Scolnik, we'll, we'll get our architect up in a second and double check that, okay?
We, we, Council President Rutherford, under all circumstances, there's an additional code review. And so we have to make sure we're code compliant. And so it's not just the planning board. It would be, in addition, the code reviewers have to make sure you meet the fire code. So Chairman, can I call Mr. Miletto for a second here?
No, let, let's, let's finish this and then I want to confuse the issue more than we have to.
Fair enough.
So, so this next question you may not be able to answer, but. Um, Mr. Tobia pointed out several industrial properties. Along both Stockman and Tompkins. Are there any issues with any contamination or remediation that you're aware of? From those properties?
We're not aware of any. Most of those are surface parking type uses. People are parking trucks out there, dumping gravel and so on. You know, I haven't obviously done an investigation of environmental problems out there. My angle, Mr. Rutherford, was only that. That's not what's supposed to be out there. What's supposed to be out there is good-looking buildings like you see now on slide fifteen.
Is there any requirement for that kind of a testing to be done?
Uh, I don't know the answer to that, but remember, if approved, this will now have to go through your building department. Which is going to review plans and all those requirements.
Got it. And the. Two, two procedural questions. One, have residents been notified of this potential project?
They better have been, else I'm gonna be in trouble.
So I'm going to take that as a yes?
Yeah, yes, we, we, we've gotten receipt of service, Mr. Council President.
And, and you know, I'm new, so I may end up abstaining anyway. I don't know the full history and I'm still getting up to speed, but. Um, is there any issue if, it's my understanding that there may be a relationship, an employment relationship between one of the applicants and the township? Is there any issue with me or other elected officials? Um, you know, voting or weighing in on this, given that?
No, no.
Unless you're ma- unless you're married or have a direct business relationship, no.
Well, I'm definitely not ma- married. My wife doesn't work for, for the town, so yeah.
You're in business, sir.
Or, or business or business. All right, I think those are all of my questions and I want to thank you for such a thorough presentation. That's it for me, Chairman.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Wilks.
Uh, no, no additional questions for me.
Okay, um, Mr. Alper.
Um, fire related, so I don't want to steal it from Pete, but is grilling permitted on that rooftop patio?
Don't know the answer, but Fire Department did sign off on this. Um, what we could do to double check that would be a condition.
Yeah, have the fire subcode official weigh in.
Exactly.
Yep, I just wanted to throw it out there. Um, I think everything else I had was also about the parking and whether or not it would be necessary. So I think we can. Hang on to that till we discuss it some more. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Garino.
Now, my questions have been asked already. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Klein.
Yes, so from what I remember, the project across the street that had zero parking, but they have to park at the garage for the other project. If they decide to be lazy and they want to park on the street, then it could become an issue on Tompkins, right, on, yeah, Tompkins. So there's going to have to be some kind of restriction that if you have that address across the street. You can't park on the street, so they may have to issue some kind of parking permit. So that people can park on the street that live on this street, except. For the building across the street where they must park over at the Central Avenue Garage.
I would agree with you. As I said, Mr. Klein, a parking study was done of that property, seventeen units. They studied three areas, the parking decks up on Mitchell, parking on Tompkins. And parking on the opposite street, the name escapes me, but.
Not Mitchell, Mitchell?
No, 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 it's not Mitchell. Moving one street westward away.
Freeman?
Okay, Freeman. So the conclusion of that study was there was ample parking in all directions.
Right. So that, then I, I would, I mean, if anybody asked me, I would say, leave the hedges and don't put the parking in the front of this place. So that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Wilks. Mr. Wilks?
Oh, you already asked me, Chairman.
I'm sorry, okay. Uh, Mr. Smiraldo.
Yeah, um, I'm going to save most of my questions for the architect because it's going to be fire related. Uh, but I do want to know, it was testified that the fire department signed off on this. What did they sign off on?
Well, you should have that in the file.
I didn't see that. Where would that be?
Was an email from Captain Joe Matula, Joe Matula. Stated there were no concerns because Mr. Hess raised that in his letter. And of course, I knew it was going to be raised, so we, we chased down the fire official and he sent an email. To the board secretary, who I asked her, I asked her to place that, I don't know if it got there, but we, we at least requested that it get into the file. So we obviously have to go through construction code and no problem with that, but.
So for the benefit of the board, could you summarize that email for me?
Yes, two words, no concerns. But did he, did he see the rooftop deck the way you just illustrated it tonight? He had to, I, I, I had the plans. He had to look at the plans. But the version that Michael Tobia presented has colored and it shows furniture and things up there.
So, uh, the, Mr. Klein, good question. So now up is slide sixteen, yes, it is colored. What he saw was a black line version of this plan.
I didn't see that.
Okay, so we're going to ask him to look at it again.
All right.
And we'll make that a condition.
What, wait, what's the condition?
Uh, well, will the fire subcode official look at the rooftop and will you be able to do grilling up there?
Okay, so that, that was a condition before, fire official to weigh in on the rooftop grilling and.
There's a difference here, Mr. Chairman. It's a subcode official and the fire official, two separate distinct positions, two different.
Whatever, whatever you say.
Fire and subcode.
I defer to you.
Okay.
The fire official would be with the, the rooftop and the subcode is guys going to approve the, the plans and the drawings as. So.
Uh, Mr. Chairman? I just checked my email. I don't have that fire report. Could you forward that to me?
Yeah, I didn't see it either.
I think it was just posted with the agenda, like we list all of the documents.
That was just an email from. The fire official, Mr. Matula. Um, I forward to Diana McCover and Dr. Boggs, but I can send it to all of you.
I'm looking at CME's report. I didn't see anything about the fire. That's why I was asking, so.
I, I don't see it on the.
It wasn't listed on the agenda?
No, it was not.
Plan, is that, is it number six we're talking about on the design comments and plan detail, flat details? It shows the north side, where his person, our office is concerned regarding the ability for emergency personnel to access the rear of the new dwelling in case of a fire. The applicant must demonstrate that the fire company is satisfied with the limited access that is proposed to the rear of the new building. So the question was just basically access to the rear of the building with two and a half feet, they can get back there. But that, but that, that's just the fire official signing off on accessibility into the rear of the structure. Nothing else about that. So I'll reserve the rest of my questions for the architect.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Cardoza. You have any questions for Mr. Tobia?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Tobia, for your thorough and thoughtful.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, thank you, Mr. Toby, for your thorough and thoughtful presentation. Uh, I'm interested in the garage, so the grounds level plan for the, uh, Stockman Street, uh, proposed building. Can we look at that?
Uh, slide, um, sixteen, okay, Mr. Cardoza, um, hold on a second, please.
It's up, Michael.
Say it again?
It's up, that's what's showing.
Oh, no, I'm zooming in, Rick, I'm sorry. You said ground floor, ground level plan?
Yeah, can we talk about the, it, it looks kind of tight for the, uh, the cars there? Can we talk about the, the measurements and how, you know? What are we expecting? It looks like, uh, folks might need to say you're, you have several passengers, you're getting out with kids, you're unloading groceries, you might need to stop before entering the garage and kind of handle some of that, you know, maybe two people can't get out on either side once you pull in.
Yeah, you're, you're also describing my garage at home, yeah, so that may be true. Now, uh, what you're seeing there are eight-foot wide garage doors, pretty standard. Um, the overall building's twenty-seven feet wide, which is really wide for a garage. The pinch, if you will, will be the staircase. Um, so what folks are gonna have to do is get in the habit of pulling up a little in the garage to dodge the staircase or unloading out on the street if it's something big and heavy.
Okay.
Moreover, the length of the building is thirty-nine feet, which is, uh, really adequate for, you know, our cars, most of them are sixteen feet, fifteen feet. Um, Mr. Klein can comment more if he wants, but it's, uh, it's adequate. There are a lot of homes out there that would love a two-bedroom garage, let me tell you, okay?
And so along those lines, the staircase, so the first car to pull in, it looks like it'll have more room, but then when backing out, if it comes in at an angle, it's gonna have, you know, that driver's gonna have to adjust on their way out just consciously.
Agreed.
Staircase. Okay.
I, I agree, we might do something with those staircases to, uh, paint a stripe on them or a reflector or something like that. And don't forget, this is not a public parking facility. Residents are gonna get used to the ritual, right? And, you know, exercise care going in and going out.
And then the staircases themselves, are they going to be enclosed or they're gonna be open underneath?
Uh, let's leave that for the architect, if you don't mind.
Okay. Um, okay, so, I'm sorry, excuse me. Along the same lines, the garage door mechanisms, is that a question for the? All right, I assume automatic garage doors, is that a question for the architect as well?
Well, I think we're gonna go automatic.
Okay, so when it comes to automatic garage doors, I know they're, you know, they're, they're probably, uh, I, I'm not well-versed. I was just doing some quick little research, um, you know, while, while my colleagues on the board were asking questions earlier, and I know there are several different, um, types of mechanisms. I know that chain, uh, drivers are, you know, known to be particularly noisy. Have, have you thought about what mechanism would be involved? I'm thinking this is anecdotal, uh, the home I grew up in, in West Orange. I know the, um, automatic, uh, system that my dad had initially, um, kind of snapped and almost took his head off one day. Uh, and they replaced it with a much safer system, so that's just a thought that, that's coming to mind right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so has there been any discussion or is, are you looking towards the future with that?
Um, we'll let the architect, um, decide. Remember, we're doing zoning drawings here now. Once he gets into the weed on construction drawings, that's usually when we fine-tune all this. Um, but, uh, we'll let him speak in a few minutes, okay?
Okay, um, yeah, and then to the, to your point about some type of uh, marking system to make it evident for folks when they're backing up to avoid the staircase, uh, maybe something similar for the door so that they pull in for, far enough um, so that they can get to the, open the door fully, the door to the staircases, uh, themselves. Yeah, that would be it. Thank you, Mr. Toby.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Hess, do you have any questions for Mr. Toby?
Just, just one question, Mr. Chairman. Um, right now, the, the plan shows on the ground level that there's two separate staircases that continue up to the, uh, first floor. Is there a way that, uh, and, and that creates some of the restriction that we're talking about in terms of getting vehicles in and out? Is there a way to use a, uh, a shared staircase to go up to the first floor and then have it split for entries, um, into the units? And that could reduce the width of staircase and give you more room for the garage downstairs.
That would then, I follow what you're saying, Mr. Hess, that would then turn the garage into a common area, if you will.
No, you could still have it so that there's a door from each garage that goes into that standard stair, that common staircase.
I follow, um.
So you would still have, you would still have individual garage, you would have a shared staircase up to the first floor, and then you would split it for access to the units.
So you're still seeing two mandors on the front of the building?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so let, let, I'm previewing this so our architect can chew on it for a moment, okay?
He, he's listening. We got it, Mr. Hess.
Each door from the garage would have its own lock, so it would still be a private garage using a common staircase.
Let's see what he says.
Okay.
That's my only question. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hess. Mr. Greigel, do you have any questions for Mr. Toby?
Well, they're pretty much all been asked by the board. They're very thorough. Just one question, I guess, Mr. Toby, with regard to the type of housing that's being proposed. There's a term that planners have been coming in vogue recently, missing middle housing. I don't know if you're familiar with that. Do you think this would qualify or, you know, fall into that category of that, of that type of housing?
Um, yep, I, you know, Mr. Skolnick called it workforce housing, um, and I think it would. I mean, we're not proposing this with income restrictions, as you know. But, yeah, that's where, that's where it's going, okay, to that, uh, affordability level.
Yeah, just want for the board's identification more than anything else, um, it's a term of art that's, again, planners have been using that in areas we have transit and access in, uh, you know, accessibility and infrastructure where it's tried to reduce the restrictions, providing housing that's more affordable through market forces versus affordable housing in the, in the formal sense.
Right.
Just want to put that out on the record, and, uh, I think I'll wait till after to speak more directly instead of questions, but, um, you know, to clarify some of the issues with the relationship between the other Tompkins project that's being built and the Harvard Press, if, if necessary. I've got some familiarity with that, with the interaction, its relationship between them. Uh, but that's all for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Toby, for, uh, since we're, um, two ques- well, two questions. Would an SUV fit into this garage?
Um, so, eight-foot door, um, it would get through that. It would probably be, um, the vehicle that parks toward the back of the garage. And look, I have an SUV. When you go into space like this, you fit, you just have to be careful about it.
Okay. Would there be bollards in the front of the, where the most anterior, interior level of the garage would be, would there be bollards? To protect the wall?
If you want, what I would suggest would be a wall-mounted rubber bumper instead. You follow that?
Yes, I would make that a condition.
Okay, okay.
Um, now, there, I, I would imagine there's a code that is gonna be safety lighting in, in all of the hallways, common hallways, garage, so on and so forth.
Um, that's all code, yes, sir.
Okay, um, just gonna ask, uh, now, uh, since we're using terminology, I would call this infill housing. Would you agree, Mr. Greigel, that this looks similar and, Mr. Toby, to the housing in the neighborhood? So as the board would look at this, even though the garage and the existing lot A would be pre-existing non-conforming, um, because the garage is taken down, we ca- under the law, we can't consider it pre-existing non-conforming, but the new house is similar to what's in the neighborhood bounded by the, uh, we would use a C-two variance, because you can't go farther left and you can't go farther right. You can't go farther out and you can't go farther back. Does it fit those requirements of infill housing that, as you said before, it's going to better the community, put something more serviceable, and have more quote-unquote, as Mr. Greigel said, affordable housing in the neighborhood? The, i- is it better for the zone plan? So that's what the board has to consider. Do any members of the public at this time have questions for Mr. Toby? Please raise your hand and be identified. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Toby on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
I'm not seeing any.
Seeing none. Thank you very much, Mr. Toby.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Skolnick. You have the floor, sir.
Okay, we're gonna call the architect, Frank Miletto. Uh, I have a couple of questions for him. If we can get him sworn, please.
Mr. Miletto, take yourself off mute. You have to take yourself off mute. Okay, Mr. Miletto, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? You put yourself back on mute, Mr. Miletto.
He leaves lips. Sorry.
Oh, help me God.
Yes, okay.
Okay, Frank, can you provide your professional qualifications?
Yes, I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey since nineteen seventy-four. I've actively, uh, continued my practice since that time. I'm a licensed plumber, planner, professional planner since nineteen seventy-six as well. I, uh, was a construction official for the city of Clifton for eighteen years. Um, done, um, hundreds of thousands of meetings, it seems, uh, before zoning and planning boards, um, and municipal courts, county courts, a federal district court.
Your license is current, your license is current, sir?
Both licenses are current, yes, sir.
Hey, Chairman, I submit Mr. Miletto, uh, just as an architect tonight.
Off on the planning, because I know, nobody could follow Michael. Excellent job.
Mr. Miletto, did you, uh, do these, uh, plans that are presented to us?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, we, unless any member of the board have any questions, we accept Mr. Miletto as a licensed architect of the state of New Jersey. You have the floor, sir.
Okay, Chairman, I'm gonna run through my notes, and if I miss anything, you'll certainly let me know. So Frank, um, Mr. Cardoza, uh, raised the issue of the garage door and whether we anticipate it's gonna have a clicker. I don't know if we've made a decision on that, but I take it you anticipate we'll, we'll have some sort of clicker for, for convenience and safety.
Absolutely, no, th- th- there's no reason not to put them in, uh, rather than have someone that's frail to be able to lift the doors and garage doors and so on. So there's no, no residential properties today that I know of that don't have that facility.
Okay, there was a question about, let, let me just answer the questions. There was a question about the ability to have an exit door to give access to the proposed new structure to the yard. You got a thought on that?
I, I have a thought on it, I, and it should be two, actually, from one from each garage to access that rear area as a common area. So there'd only be two, two mandors at the ends of the, in the back of the garages, and, uh, that would suffice to, to, or help, uh, the issue of, uh, storage of any trash that could be put back there and, uh, out of sight, and then brought out to the front when for garbage pickup.
Okay, so we, we're agreeable to a condition to add, uh, two exit doors.
It's a good idea.
Out there, we are to give access, so that there's a little common open space. So, you know, we're talking about modest apartments, and they're gonna have an area for some chairs or a grill.
No testifying, ask questions, please.
Well, I'm allowed to lead a Mr. Chairman a little bit.
We, we, we're dancing around the floor.
A little, a little leader, give me a little.
Doing a lot of dancing, sir.
Okay, how about that shared staircase, Frank? Can we do that to?
Shared what? I'm sorry.
The, the, the co- idea was, Mr. Hess raised it, and some board members.
Oh, the stairway?
The staircase is a little bit of a choke point, because the cars are gonna be pulling back. Uh, it's a, it's a decent-sized garage, but not huge. Could you do one stairway somehow going up to both apartments? Is that something that's possible? To reduce the width of the stairway so the second car has a little more room to get in and out?
It probably possible. The only reason I'm, I'm hesitating, that wall between the two units runs all the way up through the wall. That's a firewall to separate the two units, to make it, uh, a different and safer construction type. As far as the outside walls are concerned, on the side yards of each of the side yards, they, because they are less than five feet from the property line, they have to be type A construction, which would be one-hour rated walls, firewalls, again, on those ends of the building, so you've got great fire protection there, and that's probably why the fire inspectors didn't have.
We could look into, we could.
No windows, no windows of penetrations were be permitted on those two side walls.
Mr. Klein has a question, Mr. Skolnick.
How about if we did a mirror image and you put the stairwells and the doors on the outside, looking at the back, at the front of the building? That way, at least when I open up my door, I'm not opening my, I, I, I can be tied up against the closet and stairwell side with my passenger side, and I have more room to open my driver's side door. Think about that.
Well, I, I'd have to really study that, because again, I have to provide natural light and ventilation into the habitable rooms. That means that they have to face the back of the building or the front of the building. And by, and putting in staircases on the sides, maybe, uh, I'd have to study it, it's a different.
Yeah, you don't have any windows on the sides, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, right.
The sides have no windows.
No windows are permitted on the side.
Okay, so it's something that could be investigated, uh, or, uh, a reasonable effort. We talked about the location of, uh, the garbage, uh, will be in the garage, is that correct?
Yes, but if we put a door to the rear of each of the units, that would be a better place, in my opinion, to get it out of the building. It, it should be out of the building and the structure.
Okay, so we would, we would have a little, uh, enclosed garbage area right outside the back of the garage.
And, you know, uh, two-bedroom unit doesn't generate that kind of, you know, uh, garbage. It's a pail or two. I would say one recycling pail and one garbage pail.
Got it. Uh, there was a request for a, a white roof at Planters, uh, on the roof. I take it that's acceptable?
Exactly what was contemplated. It would be a CB, uh, uh, CBD. Um, plastic, it's called, but it's an EPDM roof, that's the, the litters of it. It's an EPDM roof, a sheet roof, it's walkable and, um, white.
Okay, do you know offhand if a grill is permitted up there?
No, not permitted, not, no.
Permitted.
I wouldn't permit it, no.
No go on the grill.
I'm sorry?
It's a no-go on the grill.
Correct. No.
Okay, they'll have to get.
Electric grill, if they want an electric grill out there, yes, but not a gas-fired.
Okay. Chairman, those are the questions I had that I wanted to run through, but I, perhaps there's more for the architect.
Okay, good. Uh, Mr. Wilks, do you have any questions, sir?
No, no questions.
Thank you. Maye McCartney, do you have any questions for Mr. Miletto?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Council President Rutherford, do you have any questions for Mr. Miletto in his testimony?
Yes, going back to the staircase in the garage, if the staircase were, were moved to the rear of the garage, the choke point would be in front of the, at the, at the front end of the vehicle, which would not obstruct anyone getting in or out of the vehicle. Is that possible to relocate the staircase to the rear of the property instead of the front? From the garage?
You, you're suggesting to enter the garage door, the garage, and then walk to the back of the building and then up? Is that what you're suggesting?
Yes.
Again, it takes up my floor plans above. If you just ignored that, yeah, it works in that level, but then when you take that up to the second level, it takes a lot of the uh, living areas out of the picture, because now they gotta be on the other end of the front of the building, which means they have to go a, a corridor to get there, and it, it's, it's.
No, I, I understand that.
Understand what I'm saying? If you go to the top of the stairs, everything gets reversed, and it makes a lot of traveling to get to the front apartment or part of the apartment.
So I, I would encourage you to consider then the shared staircase if it has to remain in the front, because in the case of an emergency, if someone is trying to get out quickly, you don't want them bumping into doors. doors, uh, the, the, the car, the, the vehicles that could be parked there, especially if they're tight. I, I, you know, that would be my concern in case of, I, in case of emergency, I'd want people to be able to get out as quickly as possible.
Absolutely. And that's why the bedrooms are to the front because that's where the fire department would do their rescue. The egress windows are on the front, kitchen and the living area on the rear of the house. So that the front of the house has access to the fire department to rescue. That's what the whole purpose of an egress window is. And when state adopted that business of an egress window, that alleviated the fact of fire escapes because they were unreliable. They were never maintained properly. They grew too much marijuana on them. And they, they filled them, they filled them with tomato plants and other things that were obstructions to saving a life. So they said, let's get an egress window in every bedroom, a smoke detector in everyone. They did a lot of fire and this will have it all. This will be built to the code, right to the limit. As an ex-construction official, I tell people codes are only minimum standards. They say, well, why are you doing this? Because it's safer. And now as an architect with fifty years' experience, that's the way I'm gonna build the house. Well, you do it.
Got it. Uh, I have another question about the stairway to the roof. How, how is that? How is that going to be enclosed? Is there a structure on the?
Yeah. It would be just the, it has to be closed so that the rain doesn't come down the staircases. It's common in uh, in, in the summer down, summer homes where they have decks on the roof. They put a little parapet up there and a enclosure so that they can open a door and then go down the stair. And that's another good reason for it to be in the middle. Nobody's gonna see that little structure in the middle from the street. It's not obstructing the view of the, of the top.
And those are two separate staircases, one from each unit, or is that a shared?
Two step, two separate. The, the whole theory I was trying to do is to keep them separate. They're separate units. That's why I put the bedrooms over the top of the living area. They make their own noise. They live better. It's a much better situation, a little more expensive to build, but it's a great situation to live in because you don't have people upstairs living and making noise for the people downstairs and so on like that. It's a safe, it's, and, and there's big walls between the firewall in the middle is a double wall. It's really very soundproof, safe, fireproof.
Got it. Thank you very much, Mr. Miletto. Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Council President and Mr. Alper.
Uh, nothing at this time.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Guarino.
No, not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Klein.
No, I, I think we beat this up pretty good. The only thing I was thinking is instead of them being mirror images of each other, is it better to to have them all so that, again, so the, I pull into the garage. The stairs are on my passenger side and I can move freer on my driver's side. But that's up to you.
Just one more comment is those vehicles that I show in the garage are full-size dands. They're not little cars anymore, you know, the, the, that's the days of the seventies. You could put a, easily put an SUV in there, a pickup truck. These are, these are legal eighteen, nine by eighteen spaces. That's a required space on the municipal annuals law on the residential site improvement.
RSIS.
Nine by eighteens. So that's what I made sure we could do.
Thank you.
Shouldn't show cars sometimes because it gives you the impression that it's tight. But really, a standard cars are less than sixteen feet, most of them, unless you got a really long sedan.
Thank you. Mrs. Maraldo.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry I had to mute. Um, Mr. Miletto, thank you. Um, I got a few questions in regards to the construction and, and to the, the, uh, the fire plan and everything else. Um, so the construction itself, I'm assuming it's going to be masonry, uh, garage area or with wood over top?
Yes.
Okay. Um, the, the structure itself is, since it's thirteen foot wide span, you have the firewall. Is that gonna be regular, um, uh, uh, joy, joy type construction or is that gonna be, um, with the trusses?
The floor system?
Yeah, the floor system, yeah. Floor roof system.
I haven't made that decision yet, but they could be either one because the, the span is.
Yeah, the span's thirteen feet, so I thought.
Two by twelves instead of trusses.
I'm asking for the record here so that we can get that, you know, into the, into the record, that's all. Um, so.
One that you prefer, Mrs. Maraldo?
I would prefer what the architect designs and the professionals approve it. That's what I would prefer. So.
Okay.
So that, you know, leave it up to those, those.
Thank you very much.
You're a former construction official. I'm a former fire chief, so we gotta work together here.
Absolutely.
Retired fire chief.
You have the same philosophy I do. Codes are.
Correct, so. Um, so my question then for you, based on egress and you talked about, you, you testified about the windows, the egress and things of that nature. The staircase that's coming down for the size of the building, the staircase is sufficient for emergency egress for the the occupants of that type of structure. It doesn't require a second set of staircase.
No.
Okay. All right. And the egress windows, uh, for the rec, you know, you, you mentioned it before, but that's basically they're able so that they can open up fully, get the full width, so, so that in the event.
They, they absolutely, they have to be five point seven square feet of area so the scot pack on the back of the fireman can get through it.
Okay. All right. And, um, you've mentioned the firewall, so, um, I'm comfortable with that. And I, I think that, and this is, since it's a two-family, it doesn't fall under the fire code anyway. Um, but I like the fact that you've mentioned that there's no rooftop unit, uh, for, for, um, you know, cooking unless it's, you know, unless it's the grill is electric in nature itself. And we should make that a condition. It should be electric and electric only, Mr. Chairman, because um, we didn't mention charcoal either, so that could be, that could be, so we don't want.
No flames allowed.
Don't, yeah, no flame producing. Um, okay. And, um, and I also am in favor of, uh, the back rear doors in the, in the basement, um, you know, the garage level, just, just the ease of accessibility. Um, I think that's really covers it. Um, you're gonna be putting in everything according to the code as far as smoke detectors and carbon and all and so on and so forth, correct?
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, that's, that's really all I have. I just wanted to make sure we got that on record.
Thank you. Mr. Cardoza.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll let Mr. Klein follow up on Mr. Smald's questions first.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Now, he said systems and I thought, oh, where's the HVAC and the heat? How's that gonna happen?
They're, they're through the wall units. PTAC units they're called, central air conditioning and heat, heat pumps. Similar to you would have in a hotel room.
So they're not shown on the ele, the front elevation?
All right. I didn't bring that detail. Normally zoning doesn't need that, but I can show.
All right, yes, please.
Okay.
All right. Terrific. So, uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Skolnick, for, uh, walking Mr. Miletto through some of my questions. Uh, Mr. Miletto, I know you've received a lot of questions regarding the staircase at this point. Um, just to have it on the record, your initial conception, uh, underneath the staircase, is that enclosed or open to some extent?
Enclosed. They have to be enclosed.
Okay, that's, and that's, oh.
Egress so that you can get out without going through an open space of smoke.
Okay, so then there's a hard right angle at the end of the staircase, underneath, underneath the staircase at the end of it.
Yes.
Okay, where the, the cars, you know, they, they know to maneuver around that hard right.
It's, as I said, the, the nine, minimum nine by eighteen spaces, which is the same as parking in a parking spot.
Yeah, and I believe we, we, uh, there was mention of, um, you know, rubber, uh, stoppers or something. So bumpers, so that would be great. Um.
Yeah, I, I would not pu, put bumpers in the, it's a, it's a garage. It's not a, a public garage. It was a public garage. That's another story. People go in and out of it every day and they know their garage and they're not gonna walk right into it with the car. That's if they do, they don't belong driving. They, they could do the same thing if it was a one family house and that was the size of their garage if they.
Right, but this is, this is a rental unit. We're trying to make sure the rental unit won't get beat up.
Right.
And so that, yeah, I had some time and remembered my other question or, or not other question, maybe a suggestion that when and perhaps this could be a condition, Mr. Chairman, when, um, considering automatic, um, garage door mechanisms that, um, you know, there'd be an evaluation for, for both noise and safety, uh, when looking at your options.
Yeah. The new ones are very quiet. They're worm drive or chain drive. That issue with your dad, uh, breaking the spring on him and almost getting his head cut off. Even the, the new manual doors have to have a piece of cable running through the springs that operate the door because that's what breaks. The spring breaks, that cable flies and takes heads off. So they made sure that.
And I hope that doesn't happen.
Second means of stopping that kind of.
You've already allayed my concerns. You, you know, I can tell you're well-versed in this, so much appreciated, Mr. Miletto.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Hey, do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Miletto on his testimony? Raise your hand and be identified. Do any mem, any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Miletto on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified. Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Miletto.
Thank you. Have a nice new year and a healthy one.
Good. Thank you. Mr. Skolnick, I'm just gonna, uh, do you have any other testimony or?
No, we don't.
Before you sum up, I would like to have Mr. Greigle put on the record the number of parking spots based on the code that we need for these structures. Then I'd like the board to discuss the beautiful hedge row that Dr. Alanardo created in the front of the building. And there, there were always options. I'm just gonna throw this out. There's always options that in the future, if, uh, the street becomes so jam-burgered with cars, Dr. Alanardo can come back to the board and say, we have to do this. We talked about it. We didn't do it. We left the hedge rows. However, now, in order to make this more rentable, I wanna go back and do it. So it's sort of like, see what happens. That's up to the applicant and the board's discussion. But at least that way, if, uh, the new apartments across the street do actually park away from this street, then there should be enough parking spaces. The, the opposite, the new structure will have its own parking spaces. It's just sort of a, a middle ground where the applicant, if he so, if they so choose, have an option to be conservative now and see how it goes. Because the, uh, the structure I'm sure would be rental, rented better with parking spaces. However, as the mayor has suggested, there may be other means of transportation in the near future in that area. So a, as part of the planning, but we have to think of where we are today and what the future could bring and be in the applicant's corner and the good of the people in the street. So I just throw that out there. Um, do, uh, any other members of the board have any comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Cardoza.
Um, if we're taking kind of a, I guess, straw poll of the board, uh, on that matter at the moment, I would say, um, I would be in favor of leaving the current curb appeal, uh, on the Tompkins Street, um, side and, you know, saving the applicant some money.
Okay. Any other members of the board have any thoughts?
Uh, Chairman, I, I would encourage, uh, two things. One, I would.
I, I gotta see who's, who's speaking?
Uh, Councilman Rutherford.
Ah, Council President Rutherford, go right ahead, sir.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I, um, would encourage the applicants to consider the off-street parking option. I don't know how you could unify it or, or, you know, what the, you know, landscaping would look like, but, um, we've just been having increasing parking issues in many parts of town and I anticipate that, uh, it'll be the same in that corridor too. And then I would also encourage, uh, the consideration of the shared backyard. Um, just from a, an appeal standpoint, but also, you know, emergency ingress, egress.
Yeah, I just have to weigh in on a shared backyard. This is a subdivision, so for now it's the same owner and that can be accomplished. But the properties can be sold separately and you can't force somebody unless you have an easement.
Right.
So, um, that's, that, that can work for now because it's the same owner, but it wouldn't, it, it, tomorrow he might sell one of the properties and then that's over with. So, just so you understand that.
So, Ms. McGovern, um, the lines would be staked out as in separate properties now, you would have a, a metal spike in a cement, uh, on the side. And if at the time the, the properties are, one or both properties are sold to, uh, new people, the lines would be drawn and the, uh, new owner would know that this is your yard and they could put up bushes, trees or whatever greenery.
Yeah.
Does that make sense? So that, again, that gives you another option for the future. If the applicant so chooses, to have a, a shared backyard.
It's not his intent, but, uh, I think that's a correct statement of the law, but the intent is to build the house and hold it as a, as an income-producing property.
However, the applicant wants to see, do you know what the rules are and, and the land will be spiked?
The, the only thing I'm saying is it's just, you can't make it a condition that the, the backyard has to be shared.
This, this would, this would be up to, this would be up to the applicant, uh, if he, uh, they retain it and rent it in that, in that fashion. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
It's not a condition, a suggestion to the applicant. It will not appear on the resolution.
Right.
I think it's closer to what I wanna say. Um, I want, uh, Mr. Hess, Mr. Greigle, I got a little off track. I would like Mr. Hess to go through your report after Mr. Greigle, if you have the information, talking about exactly how many parking spots are required by, uh, ordinance. So we can put that on the record for each property.
Yes, thank you. The, the requirements for, um, to one and two family homes in West Orange are the same as the state RSIS requirements. It's two, for a two-bedroom unit, one point five spaces per unit. Three-bedroom is two point zero. There's actually no standard for a one-bedroom, so conservatively we can apply the one point five. So it'd be three point five spaces required for the existing, uh, Tompkins Street, uh, dwelling. And on the other one, it's two, so it'd be three point zero spaces required. So you'd be complying, be complying in one, the other one, you wouldn't be complying regardless.
Okay.
So for the new house, it's three point zero and they have four they're providing and for the existing house, it's three point five spaces. Okay.
And there'll be either zero or one or two, depending.
Right, right, whatever the board decides. Okay.
Just point the fact again, that, just confirming on the other project, it's the affordable units for the, um, Harvard Press. It's a hundred percent affordable, uh, in, in there. If one, the low and moderate income units with zero parking provided on site, the parking's provided on the op, the other site down the street. The board, this board actually reviewed that some year, you know, a few years back and agreed to that approach. But just so it's clear, for those who were not in the board at the time, for the public's benefit, uh, that was an approval. The two projects were linked together through same ownership and development. So it's a rather unique situation, but also the standards took into account the fact there are trains, uh, train service and bus service nearby, as well as walkability to shop services, employment, et cetera.
And wasn't that also an area in need of redevelopment?
Um, one of the projects was, I don't recall this. You know, I think they might have all been, actually, I did. I don't want to say, at least part of it was, yes.
Yeah, I think at least one, I think maybe two, but I think at least one that, uh, that was, uh, the one that was in West Orange totally was. And the one that was shared, I don't recall. Right.
Uh, they were areas that needed redevelopment.
Yeah. Correct. Okay. In any case, Mr. Hess, I'd like to go through your letter of November twenty ninth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, there were a number of waivers that were requested. So for the record, I'd like to go through this and make sure we have all the appropriate waivers and the things we're not gonna waive.
Okay. Starting, I think, starting with, um, B two in our letter. Those are items that we found on the township submission checklist that remain to be addressed. Um, the first was the submission of an affidavit of ownership. Mr. Skolnick, does the applicant agree to provide that?
Okay.
Okay. Yes, I, uh, I'm not exactly sure what it was, but the owners or, or me as the owner's rep sign the application. I'm, I don't know if there's a separate affidavit.
There, there was a requirement though on the checklist for an affidavit of ownership.
So, happy to provide whatever you're looking.
Okay. Uh, uh, unless you're saying by signing it, you're requesting a waiver from that.
I request a waiver because I, I, I think I signed as the lawyer for the owner. Okay.
So is it a waiver or not? You're gonna supply it?
Did, did, uh?
I'm gonna.
You have, you have to prove, Mr. Skolnick, they have to prove that they own the land.
Okay. Okay, good.
Easy enough.
We, we provided. It's on page five of the application.
Okay, good.
Owner's authorization must be signed. We signed it. Owner's authorization must be signed. We signed it. I don't know why. I don't know. If you have a separate form, I'm happy to sign it.
Okay. Uh, are there any regulatory approvals?
Not that I'm aware of. We we'll probably get a uh, a a letter from the county planning board.
Perfect.
That that's the only one that I would know of that you would require would be the county.
Um, and and you'll I think there was a question previously by Council President, are there any D E P require, uh, any D P issues of this area? I don't recall this being any part of the brownfield sites in West Orange. Mr. Hess, do you know if this this area has been problematic?
I'm not aware of the specific site, but um, I I'm also not aware of any requirements for this type of subdivision.
Okay.
You have to do an evaluation.
Then we'll wa- we'll waive that. Now during these calculations, you go and how much impervious coverage are you adding in this on the new site? Since you're not in it, at the moment, you're not adding any any impervious coverage on lot A, so you get that back.
So your impervious cover is basically the new building.
Right, but the new building that you're taking down the garage, which is impervious, you're adding a new building, how much additional square feet? And that's what we would have to vary.
We would ask for a waiver because site plan approval is not required for this application. It's a subdivision application. So I think the checklist is designed for a site plan.
Well, that To make sure that the water doesn't pool up.
That checklist has specific columns for site plans and subdivisions. And that was was a requirement on the subdivision side. And it said, if deemed necessary, by the planning board. Um, so it it's not a lot of area. I mean, the lot's not big. The subdivided lot's not going to be that big.
And the lot, the lot is not, the the only thing that it doesn't have is what is the square footage of the existing garage?
Michael, do you have that? Or can you, can you get that?
Uh, the existing garage is approximately twenty-seven feet square, Mr. Chairman, which is about seven hundred twenty-nine square feet.
So. So you're basically dubbing doubling the impervious coverage.
Uh, no, not quite. So if I may, um, then what you have.
As it said, proposed lot B is fifteen hundred and fourteen square feet.
Right. Uh, the new building is approximately twenty-seven feet wide by thirty-nine feet deep. That's one thousand fifty-three um, square feet on the footprint minus the existing garage. The delta is approximately three hundred twenty-six square feet.
So in, would you, Mr. Hess, could you agree that i- in this project, that would be a de minimis exception?
Uh, I agree. I, the only thing I would ask is that the property be graded so it drains to the street and it doesn't impact any of the adjoining neighbors.
Okay.
It'd happen to add such a note to the plans.
Okay, and unless the board has any issue, I would recommend we grant that waiver. I'm sure it's going to have TV and sewer and
Right.
It's going to be hooked up to the town sewer system, correct?
Uh, yes, it has to.
Okay, good.
The sewer and water systems.
Sewer and water system and electric.
So I I would have no problem with a waiver of item thirty-six on the checklist.
Perfect.
That they will be helping out.
Excellent. Most existing proposed, are there any deed restrictions that you know of, Mr. Skolnik?
No, I don't believe there are.
Okay. I said ten sign waivers exceptions. Uh, you don't eat, no soil erosion, no, no. So uh, C twenty, I'm sure, okay. Uh, the record says no, there's no waivers or exceptions. We're gonna vary thirty-eight, thirty-nine.
And we noted in the letter that items thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six and forty-seven and forty-nine, they were waivers that were requested, but they're not required on the checklist.
Unless the, unless anybody in the board has a, a problem, I would recommend we we uh, grant the waivers. The side triangles, one of the questions I have is as these people are going to back up on the new property to the streets, should there be a beeping or something as the garage opens? So people walking there on the small sidewalk would know that the car is backing up. Or some type type of safety or warning device. It doesn't have to be loud, but it has to be something. I'm going to leave that for the applicants and the architect to recommend to the building department, but I I believe there should be something for safety purposes. Because they're not going out frontwards, they're going out backwards.
Right.
I'm getting a big nod from Mr. Klein, so yes.
Once in a while, I get a nod from Mr. Klein. I am psyched.
No, is this a condition or are you just suggesting?
I would say that this is a residential zone. This is not an industrial zone. As much as I appreciate the safety of what you're suggesting, I really don't think that's necessary in a residential zone.
It's residential and there's people walking up and down the sidewalk.
And that's, that's why I'm recommending it. I I.
They do it a lot, do a lot in word areas where it's tight like this. There's not much space between. If it was set back half a car length, then at least the car could be halfway out the garage.
Right.
People would see it. It's very short.
The people, the people you you have, you have no room to jump.
Yeah.
So it would be a warning signal as the garage door opens to alert pedestrians?
Something's going to be, it doesn't have to be loud. It just has to be
Yeah.
With within.
Be a light, it could be a little bell, yeah, something.
Okay.
So that it's it's not happening at two in the morning if somebody's running out?
It's not going to be that loud. It's really meant to be very localized. I'm ten feet away from the garage. That's, yeah, yeah.
Just for the people walking by.
Sounds like something we could work out as a.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Condition.
And and finally, item fifty-two, I
Gotta do it.
I think th- they have to pay whatever's required.
Yeah, yeah, whatever, whatever, whatever is required by COA.
That's correct.
Okay, uh, design comments. The applicant should address the board, the subdivision will be perfected by filing a deed.
I think Mr. Slodnik could confirm they they plan to follow the uh, subdivision by map? No, no, by D, by D. These are all cost generative items. I I asked the board, please keep them on. It's, it's, you know, two thousand square feet of abitable floor areas. We're trying to balance the development cost.
Done.
Skolnik is the name, Mr. Hess.
Uh, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna lose the name that just applicant. My city reviews and parking requirement. Okay, so we got one, two, three, four covered. Loving it. Uh, according to base. Uh, Mr. Hess, has all of the five through twelve been taking care of paper in the parking area we're not doing?
We, I have not seen a revised plan. However, since we're not filing a plat, then these are all requirements if you're filing a map. So if you're not filing a map, then things like the coordinate base uh, is not required.
So five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven.
Six has been, right, five would no longer be required. Six has been addressed by the letter. Seven was was a clarification if it's going to be a two and a half story or three-story building.
For the architectural. It is, the architectural showed three-story. It is, it's a short three was the testimony.
As I recall, the testimony was thirty-one feet high.
Right, it fits with height, but not with the eh, with the stories because it's three stories.
Right.
Our state's own plan existing dwelling, a single-family university's, last reported. So the planner's report, uh, ha- uh, number eight, we have to agree.
Well, the planner's report was correct. It's it's a two-story dwelling. It showed on the subdivision plat that it was um, uh, was it, it said in the planner's report, it's two-family. It showed on the the subdivision plat that it was only a the existing building was only one family.
So it's two-family.
So it is two-family, that's.
It's two-family, okay, we agree.
But and that's, it's not being filed, so we don't have to
Right.
Pause the plat.
The secretary of construction claim must be revised to statement proper authority.
Right.
Approved the map.
Again, the architectural plan shows what this.
This is okay, this is not.
Certification number ten is no longer required, but certification no longer required.
Eleven?
Um, we no longer have to worry about addressing it, although I don't know how a subdivision map could not be a survey.
You gotta have a survey.
Right, we, there was a survey, there was a survey from.
Okay, as long as it was a survey.
Well, it wasn't submitted to the board, I don't believe.
Okay, it should be submitted.
It's it's sort of on there.
Oh, we did, I'll, I'll take that. Submit a separate survey.
Okay.
So that was addressed. So we don't need to worry about the uh, what was on the plat.
Okay, you gotta put, you gotta put on the new address, the address of the new building.
They'll have to come up with it, but that doesn't have to be shown on the plat anymore, so it's not being filed.
That's one improvement, since the press can't keep it urban.
And they're not doing the
Right.
Paper parking area, the press curb pavement restoration. Um, so none of that would be applicable.
Right. And there is going to be some landscaping.
Right.
Okay. I'm psyched. Okay, um.
Chairman, are you saying that all the stormwater regulations have been, they will comply with all stormwater regulations?
Say, I'm sorry, say that again, Council, uh, Mayor.
Uh, so I was asking that you just raised through that, but have all the stormwater regulations, are they going to comply with all the stormwater regulations?
Uh, Mr. He- Mr. Hess put on the record that the, it it's a de minimis area of stormwater. So it's not going to really increase it, but everything is going to be graded towards the street. So any water that would be on the lots going to go toward the street. Uh, so it shouldn't, a- again, Mr. Hess, I don't put words in your mouth. I just want to make sure that we agree it's not.
This is not a major, a major development, so they're not subject to the new stormwater regs. And the increase in impervious cover is, I think the applicant had testified it was around three hundred and fifty square feet, so it's de minimis.
Okay, and we've actually decreased the overall from what they requested to start out with. Of course, there's not going to be cement pavers in the front of the uh, original property.
Right, so thank you, okay.
Okay, good. So we got that on the record.
And and Chairman, uh, Chairman, real quick.
This is Meraldo.
Um, Dr. Alonardo said previously, um, that it may be removing some trees. Um, if we can confirm that with the landscaping plan, because we've had in the past where um, sometimes uh, tree permits have not been, they've been overlooked or removals. So just make sure if if there are trees going to be removed, um, that we just make sure that the permits are are submitted correctly, so we don't run into future problems.
Absolutely, Dr. Alonardo, you can have the uh, the forester come to the site and look at any noxious or dead trees. Uh, and then uh, he and the zoning official can issue permits as required.
Yeah, that that could be a condition in the approval that they apply for a tree removal permit if
Yes.
Trees are proposed to be removed.
Yes.
Yeah, we, we, we've run into that problem with some other properties. I just want to make sure that we don't, we close all the problems for everybody.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so what we have to do is now go through the C variances. We have to identify each C variance and either go yea or nay. Because we have heard the testimony, so based on the testimony of Mr. Tchobia and Mr. Malletto, the, even though this is not pre-existing non-conforming, the garage was. So the board looks, has to look at this and say, you're building a brand-new structure. It is bound by certain things that can't be moved based on the uh, the applicant does not own that land. We have to decide, is this quote-unquote infill housing, if it's within the requirements uh, of a unit that is going to um, be beneficial to the zone plan, not detrimental? Are there, is there anything about this project that is detrimental? For me, it seems like the applicant has fulfilled all the requirements and upgraded the existing house. Up, is going to upgrade the lot, add new reasonably priced uh, rental units in this area, consistent with what is going on in that area of town. Uh, not requested any public money using private funding, fulfilled all the requirements of the uh, director planning and the uh, en- uh, engineer. Um, it is beneficial to the zone plan. I find that the benefits outweigh the detriments. And so based on that, uh, one more thing, uh, I don't want to be remiss. I have to ask for public comment. I'm sorry, Mr. Skolnik, you have to sum up before I go further.
Chairman, we've been at this a while and I I think the board has a pretty good understanding. If if you feel like you need a summation, I'll be happy to provide.
No, 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 I'm just asking if you want to say any other words.
I appreciate that. I'm going to waive the summation.
Cool beans. Thank you, sir. Do any members of the public have any comments on this application? Please raise your hand and be identified. Do any members of the public have any comments on this application? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Not seeing any.
Seeing none, we're going to close this portion of the meeting. So based on what I just said, um, uh, Ms. McGovern, would you read the conditions, please?
Yes. Uh, there'll be a white roof on the new house uh, with planters. Um, trash will be kept uh, outside in the back of the garage and not left on the street. Um, what I don't know if the board is ruling on whether there has to be an enclosure built for the for the trash or whether just keeping the cans in the backyard. You can let me know. Uh, there will be.
Excuse me, Chairman, let me just ask if you're asking for rest to be picked up, does that mean they'd need a private hauler to get their trash instead of putting it out on the street?
No, I think it was a matter of the storage of the cans, not to leave their cans on the street, that they would have to put them out. Whatever your garbage days are and then take them back in off of the street. But the question I had was, there was a mention of uh, creating an enclosure if you want an a physical enclosure or it's just to be put in the back area, either in the garage or outside of the garage in the backyard.
I I think we can, uh, I don't know, I would say to the board, we, I would leave that up to the applicant, as long as it's off the street and out of the way, uh, and the, uh, this would be up to the uh, applicant to instruct whoever rents from them where to keep the garbage, take it out on the appropriate days and uh, within uh, twelve hours of removal of the garbage, the garbage cans must be removed from the street.
Right, good, thank you.
Um, the re- that there will be two rear man doors off the back of the garage for it, provide access to the backyard. The fire and subcode official will weigh in on the roof amenity and no grilling by use of or flame-producing uh, methods, electric grill only may be permitted upstairs, uh, up on the rooftop amenity. Wall-mounted rubber bumper at the rear of the garage. Uh, if trees are removed, uh, applicant or property owner must make a a tree removal permit request. Will leave the front lawn and the hedges intact with the option to return to the board at a later date if parking becomes a problem or necessary. Uh, well, we, I will go through the the areas of the Hess report that were discussed that would be supplied. Will consider an automatic garage door system uh, with consideration to noise and safety. The property will be graded so that it drains toward the street and a warning signal as to the garage, as the garage door opens to alert pedestrians or oncoming vehicles that are close by.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, Mr. Cardoza.
Uh, I heard, uh, Ms. McGovern, thank you. Um, you mentioned the bumper in the rear of the garage. Um, is that, is that the only bumper? And if so, could there be some type of like soft wrapping around the ninety-degree angle under the staircase?
Uh, the the bumper in the back of the garage, yes, the soft wrapping. I I leave that up to the applicant and the architect. If cars get damaged, the uh, renter would say, you gotta do something. I I I don't want to condition something that may or may not be required. As Mr. Malletto said, these are the largest cars from the nineteen seventies.
Yeah.
Cars today may be smaller, so uh, we'll leave it up to the uh, renters to speak to the uh, the owner and go from there. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you for clarifying.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions, comments, witnesses?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, I hear a voice.
I have, I have, I have a question, Mr. Chairman. This came to my, just came to my mind. I have, I have, I have a question, Mr. Chairman. This came to my, this came to my mind. What about the potential for EV? If a tenant happens to purchase an electric vehicle.
Yeah, you can't do, you can't do it indoors. You can't charge it indoors. Uh, oh, one other, one other condition, I'm gonna throw this out there. At no time in the future, this underground parking could ever be con, uh, can be converted to living area. It's gotta be parking in perpetuity, or they'll have to come back to the, uh, planning board for a reevaluation.
Well, storage also then. You don't want them to use it as a one car if they have one on the street and one in the garage and storage.
So, yeah, yeah, yes, yes. You, I guess you could use it as storage as long as it's not flammable. You, you have to preclude any flammable liquids if it's to be used for storage.
No, well, I guess, are you trying to say that if the tenant has two cars, he's gotta park them both inside?
No, unless, that, um, that street does have off-street par, on-street parking.
So he could actually, okay, so he could park both cars on the street and put a ping pong table inside.
If, if you're, if the tenant is using it for storage, don't bother the landlord.
All right.
Not his job.
All right, so the condition is cannot convert the garage area to living space?
Correct.
Okay.
You can't make a bedroom or a, a living room or anything like that.
Okay.
Oh, so, so you can't put a ping pong table inside the garage? That's what I was like, I thought you were trying to get, that you want to try to make sure it's used for parking.
Yeah, you can't put a ping pong table inside the garage.
Okay, so I'm just leaving the word living space and whoever has to enforce this will know no ping pong tables.
The applicant has a very good idea what we're talking about. If you put a ping pong table, don't let me know. Is that?
Well.
Chairman, and regarding flammables, you know, you can't really dictate that because there aren't flammable cabinets. I think that's really gonna be a lease agreement that the landlord and the tenant should come to and just make a.
Fair enough.
You can, you can buy flam, flammable cabinets.
You're absolutely right. I, I'll strike that word.
Yeah.
Mrs. Chairman, if I may.
Do you need a community space?
I'm sorry, council president first, and then Mayor McCartney, council president.
Uh, so really quickly, two things. One, I do think it's important that the garage actually be used as a garage. We are trying to alleviate any potential future parking issues. Um, and, and we do have some. I know that there's been some studies down there, but I've been in that corridor frequently myself, frequently myself. And I am concerned, um, with the impact on on-street parking. So I don't know how to phrase it, but I do think the garage has to be used for parking. Um, and then the second thing, uh, what is the mechanism or what is the, the protocol? Um, for the applicant to come back? Um, so, so let's say there is, there are complaints about parking on Tompkins Street. Uh, and we, and we, we get those on the council all the time. If there's a, if there are complaints about parking on Tompkins Street, then what, i- if we don't require the off-street parking now. We, we would not be able to require it down the road. Am I, am I right?
That's correct.
So I, I'm, I'm hesitant to let that go. I know that this, there's gotta be a voter or majority or whatever the case may be. But I think if we can't require it down the road, I think we should require it now.
Okay, I agree. Let's leave the parking, uh, the, the garage parking is garage parking, not storage.
No, I think that the coun- council president is talking about the front yard parking. Is that what you were talking about?
I was actually talking about both of them, correct, uh, both of you? So I think the garage, the, uh, parking on the Stockman Street project should be used only for parking. The garage should only be used for a garage. And then I do think we should, um, require the parking on Tompkins Street. I know it will impact the beauty of the, uh, property and, and Mr. Doctor and Mrs. Alardo, you guys have done a phenomenal job. It looks great. Not trying to take away from that, but also not trying to add to the parking issues in that corridor, uh, if we can avoid it.
I got it, but right now, they're not changing the people who rent that space. So they're not increasing parking on Tompkins. Tom, right, Tompkins Street?
Tompkins, correct.
Tompkins. They're not increasing parking on Tompkins Street at this moment, because somebody's living there.
No, I get it, but, you know, should the renters change? And they have the ability to do so at any time, you know, I know they're subject to a lease. Um, you know, then you're looking at new renters who, in a three-bedroom home, could very easily have two cars.
Yes.
You know, and actually it's two units, it's four bedrooms total. I, I think if, and, and we don't have the ability to then down the road require it. If we can't require it after this moment or after this process is completed, I think it's. I think it's a little, little nearsighted to, to not require.
Well, I, I, I also look at the other, the other, so we also look at everything on the street. So nobody else has front yard parking and I don't see any garages there. So.
No, I get it.
We're gonna single out one house and say, you. Now, re- realize, they haven't done anything to Lot A.
No, I get it. I, I'm saying, so, so other houses on that street may come before this property. I mean, this board, uh, to change their property down the road. And I would, I would, you know, hope that they would address whatever the parking issues are at that time as well.
I got you, but they're, they're not changing property. They're changing the other property. That, that, that's the balance we look at. So this property is not changing. Right now, they were going to change the front yard, take away the, the hedge row and put in, and put in pavers. They're not doing that. So this property is staying untouched. So they're subdividing the land. The land behind, you have a better argument to say parking. I mean, at least this is me, anybody on the board, uh, try.
I understand fully exactly what you're explaining. I'm not trying to challenge that.
No, no, it's okay. I, but I want, I want the board to weigh in on it. Mr. Klein has a thought. Mr. Klein?
I can't remember from the beginning. Doctor, um, do the tenants that live on the Tompkins? Property, the one in the three-bedroom, do they park in the garage on the, on the Stockman side? No, okay, so.
Yeah.
They, so they park on the street. And like Dr. Bagoff said, there are no other driveways on Tompkins where cars have to back out onto the street. These would be the only two. So I, I, and, and there's a big hedge, if you're parked facing the house on your left side, that it's gonna be difficult to see pass. To be able to back out onto Tompkins, not to mention the parallel cars parked on the street. So I, I, I don't think anything's happening on that side. In the future, if the doctor says, oh, my tenants can't find a parking spot, then the doctor will come back to us. The applicant will come back and say, I'd like to get one parking spot in my front yard or two in my front yard.
Yeah, likely before that happens though, Mr. Klein, likely before that happens, when the complaints come in, they're gonna come to the town council. Uh, and then we're gonna have to talk to DPW, we're gonna have to talk to police, we're gonna have to talk to all these other parts of town. To address what could be potential and, and what we're getting in other parts of town, including that part of town, uh, with regard to parking complaints. So, so that, that, that may not be a persuasive argument, um, that I just want, you know, you don't understand where I'm coming from, uh, on that particular issue. Um, we know that, that that area has, on the orange side of the border and on the west orange side of the border, many new planned developments. Some of which have, uh, you know, plenty of parking and some of which don't. Um, and there are some other parking issues down there as it is today. And so if we could address that, I would like to. And if, if that's not a persuasive argument for the board, you know, I've done the best that I could.
It's, it's only a plus one. It's, you're taking away one from the street and putting two on the property. You're only getting plus one. In the grand scheme of things, I can't see one more additional parking space.
Your, your argument, uh, council president, your argument is persuasive if they were changing the lot. But they're not doing anything there. So we, we had, the board has less, um, legal, uh, ability.
Or reasoning.
Or a reason, eh, except to say to the applicant, we want you to help out everybody else in the neighborhood who doesn't do this. So, uh, in fairness, where they, they have taken care of the parking on the other side. So they're not adding to the street parking. So in this event, it's a double-edged sword. And, uh, I would, uh, again, unless somebody else on the board wants to weigh in on it, I would leave. Tompkins Street the way it is. There'll be on-street parking if the applicant feels in the future that, uh, one or two slots on the front would be advisable. They have the plan already. We've heard it. They'll come back and they'll ask for it.
All right, I've made, uh, I think we've beaten that horse too. Uh, so thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. It, it's always good to hear, uh, different opinions, uh, but we're, we're all, we also weigh in on. Are we doing something to one person, we're not doing to everybody? And, uh, because this, this lot is not having anything done to it. In, in that regard, um, I, I think we did the best we could. And the applicant has heard us and the applicant's attorney has heard us. So to that end. Um, I recommend we approve PB twenty-three dash eleven Tompkins Realty LLC Block Seven Lots Twelve dot O two Zone RM thirty-four Tompkins Street. Uh, proposing to subdivide an existing lot and develop a two-family home and related improvements to one lot. Uh, the improvements are gonna be on one lot only. Is that correct? We all agree. Okay, good. Um, with, with the conditions and the, uh. Proofs for the C variances as stated by Mr. Miletto and Mr. Tchobia. Uh, and that I have reviewed and is reviewed by all members of the board. Do I have a second?
Some moves.
Mr. Smaraldo sec, I'm sorry, Mr. Smaraldo seconds. On the motion, Yamalat.
Mr. Alpert? Mr. Alpert?
Mr. Alpert, you gotta talk.
Yes.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mrs. Maraldo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilks?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Can I go over there for?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Oh, yes, and thank you for your investment along the Valley Corridor.
Mr. Waino?
Yes.
Chairman Bagoff?
Yes, yes, yes. The eyes are above the nose. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you for bringing a great project. Thank you for Mr. Skolnick. Excellent job, sir.
Thank you. Well, we'll, uh, we'll see in a few weeks, uh.
Thank you very, very much. It's gonna look great.
Happy residential on.
Uh, the next regular planning board meeting will be Wednesday, February seventh, twenty twenty-four at seven thirty PM via Zoom. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion, Mr. Klein, I second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Close. The eyes are above the nose. Happy New Year. Thank you, everybody. Have a wonderful evening.
Good night, everybody. Congratulations. Happy New Year.
Thank you very much. Happy New Year.
Thank you.